This is new. It's extra because of our agenda tonight. They gave me extra power. All right, we're going to call this city council meeting to order and first order of business, please silence your cell phones and then please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance given by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a first order of business, we have a request to move item C on the public hearing agenda to January 27, 2015. This would be a continuance request. This is the project known as the Biltmore Apartments on Fairview Road. Do I have a motion to continue item C on the public hearings agenda to January 27, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
All right, anyone wishing to make comment on the motion to continue this item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if you were here for the Fairview Road project, that's item C on the public hearing agenda, you get a little reprieve until January 27. The other item that we need, a motion for continuance, is item F on the public hearings agenda that the Graymont Village Apartments. Do I have a motion to continue that until January 13?
So moved.
Second.
All right, anyone wishing to speak on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now resuming where we were, we'll go back to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that someone would like to consider separately or has a question about?
I have a question, not about a particular item. There are several items where we're entering into contracts tonight. I understand the state hasn't allowed us to require living wage of our contractors. However, it's still an item that's of interest and I wonder if that's something that council might be interested in better understanding what wages we are supporting in the community as these contracts come up.
And what form would that take?
I'm not, I don't quite have, I don't have a process in mind, but as I read these contracts, I wonder if, you know, if we're supporting wage stagnation, wage depression.
Are you wanting to have a report or some information when we, when these contracts are being considered on our consent agenda as to the wages we're asking for or?
Or just what's being provided. I mean, I think just having it as part of our awareness of these contracts is a really important thing and to be able to report back to the taxpayers what we're supporting.
Gary, do you?
If council would like to see that, staff will work on a way to format that for you and obtain that information when we receive the bids.
Okay, all right, maybe we can try out some different formats.
Yeah, I don't have a process in mind, Gary. Whatever you think will be most efficient.
Let me suggest that we check with what reporting is provided now, what information that we have and what additional information we'd have to gather in order to satisfy your need for information. We'll put a staff memorandum together on background information and what best practices might lead us to do.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding the agenda, the consent?
Mayor, at great risk, and I shouldn't do this, know better, but will, item K, I just would really like to thank the downtown, Asheville Downtown Association for the gift of the canopy in Pac Square Conservancy Park. I know it comes with an expense, but it also enables us to use that park to a better degree in that we are able to have musical production there that we would not otherwise have. And it's a great gift. It's done by a nonprofit association that has been so beneficial to the city over the years. I just feel like we would be amiss to not thank them for that presentation.
That is a good point, Jan. Well taken. And I would add, the item concerning the golf course, I noticed there was a piece in the paper today about the item on our consent agenda regarding the expenditures for the water system on the golf course. One of the things I wanted to highlight about this is the transition the city's been able to make in the last several years to take the golf course annual, as an annual expense off our books. It used to be a six-figure subsidy to the city, just operationally, to run the golf course. Wasn't able to generate enough revenue to cover itself. And now the city leases the golf course to a private entity that runs it for the city and what that has enabled the city to do is redirect its dollars to make investment in capital improvements needed for the golf course. So that, I think that was a little bit confusing in the newspaper article today and I thought was an interesting point to clarify because when we made this change, we were anticipating being able to do something like this and it's come to fruition. So that's kudos to the finance department and the leadership getting us where we need to be on the golf course.
One other item.
Oh, okay. I feel like you're inspired now.
And this one, and I apologize to staff for not bringing this up before we get to this table and I certainly don't want to derail the process, but on item G, resolution authorizing city manager enter into contract with American Seating Company for replacement of McCormick Field Seating, it would be really nice to understand exactly what the seating will look like, that the Silver Dollar Baseball is going to be doing there. I've had some constituents ask about that and, you know, by all means, the seating needs to be improved, but I think I would have a question of what it will look like.
I'd like to see that as well.
Do you want to hold up on this item?
I wouldn't mind if it's not time sensitive, if we could get that before we move on with it, but on the other hand, if it is.
Could I suggest you approve it, but we would not issue the authorization and execute the purchase until you had a chance to see it?
Barbara's dying to add something to this, yes?
It is, it's three days time, so we need to make sure that you all can see it as soon as possible. This is kind of the last meeting for approval we have to be able to install, sorry, thanks, Mayor. Barbara Whitehorn, Finance Director. This is the last meeting where realistically, we can get the seats installed before the beginning of the season. So we're on a really tight deadline, but we are happy to provide the details of the specs and photographs of other arenas where those seats are used.
Is there a scenario where we, maybe during this meeting, if you have those documents, we could, you could bring them back and we could hold this item out and vote on it later?
It might be a long meeting. My.
You know, frankly.
I can run them down.
When I brought it up, I did not have intention of wailing and I was just curious about it and hopeful that we might have some part in the decision-making. So I realize that we leased that to Silver Dollar Baseball and it's not our real purview to.
But it is a beloved historic place in our city and just for us to be abreast of that, to be able to share it with constituents would be helpful.
I think we can stay on track with your approval, but allow for you to review the seats, to make sure that they're acceptable to you before we execute the authorization you give us.
I would really like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, I'd like to highlight, that's another asset of the cities where we, as a city, have gotten out of the reoccurring expense portion of running McCormick Field. We used to help underwrite that, but now the ball club has taken over all the recurring expenses, which allows us again to free up our dollars for capital, much-needed capital improvement out there. All right, any other item? Anyone has a question about on the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, does any, is there anyone wishing to make comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have approval of the consent agenda. We have two presentations and reports tonight. The first is a presentation of the external audit of the fiscal year 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And Barbara Whitehorn is back for that presentation.
Hi, I'm Barbara Whitehorn, CFO and Director of Finance and Management Services. I'd like to introduce Eddie Burke from Cherry Beckett, our external auditors, and he will be giving you an audit wrap-up and presentation brief. We will try to keep it under 10 minutes. Thanks.
I'm going to be talking about a couple of topics and I'll try to be as brief as I can. First, I'd like to give you just sort of a brief overview of the audit and where we stand and the results of all of that. Every audit has what we refer to as areas of focus and I will not go into all the details on everything that we did, but I'd like to sort of highlight for all of you the areas that we did spend the majority of our time. It doesn't know what matter of meaning that that's all we did, but that's sort of the areas that we really spent the majority of our time. Then I'd like to go through very briefly the results of the audit and the different areas that we looked at. Then there is some required communication I'd like to talk very briefly about. And then finally, there is a slide in there about your general fund and your fund balance. I've got a few comments that I'd like to make in regards to that. First, we've completed the audit for June 30, 2014. We did meet along with the finance department's assistants, the contractual obligation to the local government commission of October 31. We conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. There are different types of auditing standards that you can actually apply in the accounting and auditing world. Because of the federal and the state dollars that you receive, you're required to have your audit completed in accordance with this particular set of standards. And then finally, where we fit in as your external auditor, we really have three primary roles in this process. First, to perform our audit in accordance to the auditing standards that we are applying. Secondly, to issue an opinion. And then third, communicate matters if they are deemed to be material to the governing body. As a part of our audit process, we did look at the internal control environment. Primarily, we looked at it from the top down, basically looking at the governance all the way down to the initiation of a transaction. The major cycles that we looked at from a control perspective was receipts, disbursements, billings, and payroll, and then the grant area. For those areas, we did a couple of things. First, we gained a good understanding of what the process was. We did walkthroughs of those processes and then we also did control testing to make sure that that process and those processes were actually being followed consistently throughout the year. Because of the federal and the state dollars that you did receive, you did have your audit performed in accordance with Circular A133 and the State Single Audit Implementation Act. Basically, what that requires is that all of the federal and the state dollars that you receive, there are requirements of what you can and you cannot do with those dollars. We basically look at the control environment around those particular grants and also we actually perform tests of compliance to make sure that you are spending those dollars in accordance with what the requirements are. And there are two opinions which I'll address in a few minutes in regards to that. Before I go into the next area, I would like to say that management, that management and everyone at the city was fully cooperative with us throughout the process. All of the information that we requested was given to us timely and it was a good process, I think, from our perspective. The areas of focus, and I'm not going to go into all the details, cash and investments, I'll go into that because that's an area that everybody really focuses on. That's an area that's the most susceptible to theft. We spent a lot of time there, making sure that the amounts that you had recorded on your books agreed to supporting data. In the way of receivables and payables, we made sure that you were properly recognizing your transactions in the proper period. We did a lot of confirmation work where we actually contacted third parties that gave you and were sending you money and we reconciled that back to your books. We also did a lot of vouching to make sure the, on the expense side, that you were recognizing expenses in the proper period. And then from payroll, from a payroll perspective, there's a number of tests that we did as far as relationship testing, making sure that relationships with certain items within the financial statements were reasonable and consistent. Debt, we spent a lot of time on, just making sure that the amount that you have recorded in the financial statements agree to third parties that you owe those money to. And then litigation, your big litigation, of course, out there right now is the water system. We got an understanding of where you were at in that process and you are well aware in June, there was a order come down from Judge Manning, so we, there's actually a disclosure in the financial statements in regards to that. As far as the opinions are concerned, on the financial statements, you received an unmodified or a clean opinion. That is the highest level assurance that we can provide on a set of financial statements. What that basically means to you, what it means to the citizens and the grantor agency and the other uses of the financial statements is that we believe as an independent third party, that financial statements as presented are reliable and can be, they're reliable as far as what the assets and liabilities and revenues and expenses are reflected. From an internal control perspective, your control environment here is actually very good. There's a lot of segregation of duties between the key functions. There's a lot of cross-checks within those processes and overall, the process is reliable. From a statutory perspective, we did test to make sure that you were in compliance with North Carolina general statutes. That's main statute that applies to finance is statute 159 and there's various areas that we actually address in regards to that. But from the testing that we did, we found that the city had complied with the statutes. From a federal grant perspective, there's an opinion in there for that. You did receive an unqualified or an unmodified opinion on that. Internal controls around the administration of those grants were deemed to be reliable and there were actually no findings in regards. And what that means to you is that the money that you receive for federal dollars, you spent it the way you were supposed to and there were good controls in place to make sure that you were doing that. And then finally, from a state single audit perspective, you also receive state dollars that are required to have compliance testing. You received a clean opinion on that. Control environment around that was also adequate and there was no statutory compliance issues noted during the testing of those areas. From a required communications perspective, two things specifically I want to point out here. One having to do with adjusting journal entries and the second having to do with past adjusting journal entries. We did not propose any adjusting journal entries to your books. When we came in, the information that was provided to us was reliable and the numbers that are reflected are basically the numbers that we were given when we came in to start the audit process. There were also no past adjusting journal entries. There are situations where we could identify something and the cause, it was small or trivial, we would not post it. There was nothing really out there. I mean, so overall, the books and records were in good shape. What that means to you as a governing body is that the closeout process that's being used by finance is reliable, so when you're getting information throughout the year, it should be pretty reliable, assuming they're following that same process that they follow at the end of the year. From a other issues perspective, and these are not control issues, but one of the things that we look at is the IT system. These are actually comments that we have most of the time on most of our municipalities. The key things here is that you do need to have formalized policies in the way of IT. The one area that we did not have any problems with whatsoever, but I always like to bring it up because what's effective today may not be effective tomorrow, is your penetration and your firewall protection around your data to the system. There's a lot of publicity. There's something in the news, it seems like about every other week, about where someone has hacked into systems. You've got a lot of confidential information. I would just encourage you to make sure that you stay on top of that. And again, we didn't have any findings. What you're doing now is fine, but it's something that needs to be continually on your radar screen, I think. And then finally, my last slide is sort of a snapshot of your fund balance in the general fund. There's actually some reporting standards that require how the portion of the pie is actually broken up. The key number on here, I think, is your unassigned fund balance. That's basically the amount of fund balance you have that you can spend at your discretion where it hadn't been obligated in some way. That represents about 17% of your general fund expenditures for June 30, 2014, which is above the recommended level by the local government commission. In closing, the city, I think, is heading in the right direct, the correct way from a projection perspective. Your revenues were up in property taxes. If you look, your building permits are up, which should be a sign of your tax base going up on future years. Your sales tax was up this year. So you've got a lot of positive things going on. Internal control environment was good and that concludes my comments and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions? Sorry. So, thank you very much. Great news. Last year, there were two recommendations, I believe.
There were actually three.
Three?
Yes.
And so what's the status of the city's implementation of those recommendations?
They were actually, we actually, part of our audit process, we actually followed up on those and they have been addressed in clear this year.
Great.
All three of them. And there's actually, if you look in the financial statements in the single audit area, there's actually a page in there, follow-up on prior year findings where they've been addressed and being corrected.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment and a motion. The comment is that I'm delighted, I'm chairman of the Finance Committee, by the way, and I'm delighted with this report. And I would just point out to council that it's not often that an auditor says, "You actually do a good job of internal controls." And, you know, this is an extraordinarily clean bill of health that we're getting here and I want to thank Gary and Barbara, especially, and all your staff that work on this because as Gwen pointed out last year, we, you know, we had some things to address and that was sometimes the case in prior years, but we, I think we really made progress in being organized and diligent in our finance area and I, again, just appreciate it. We see it a little more up close at Finance Committee, but with that, I move that we accept the CAFR for the fiscal year.
Second.
All right. Anyone have any other questions, comments on council? All right, and we, if anyone's wish, would like to make comment on this motion, this would be the time to do that. All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for making the trip here and giving us this report. We have one other item. Yeah, Barbara's going to do the quarterly financial.
I am, and I feel like I would be remiss, given such a great audit this year, in not introducing the key staff that I've invited tonight.
Please do.
Is that okay? Okay, will you all stand up when I call your names? Tony McDowell, our Budget and Financial Reporting Manager. Pat Legori, our Fiscal Services Manager. Erin Marie Wheeler, one of our budget analysts who also works in accounting when she's needed. Tia Keith, Financial Operations Analyst. Crystal Frizzle and Francesca Figaro, accountants. Carrie Price, Accounting Supervisor, and Rebecca Hope, Lead Accountant. And I want to really thank you. And I feel like this was a particularly great kind of city birthday gift because today is my one-year anniversary with the city.
Congratulations.
Yes, I'm very excited. The quarterly financial reports, because it's the first quarter, we don't have a lot to really offer you. We gave you a report. If you have questions, obviously, staff is on hand to answer anything. We didn't feel that a presentation was appropriate only three months into the year.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Barbara, just before you go, I read the report in advance and just, so the public will know, we heard from the audit report that our fund balance, in other words, kind of the net results of all our financial activities, was above not only standard thresholds for city governments, which, but our own target, which I think is 15%.
Yes.
15% of annual general fund revenues should be, you know, our fund balance or our.
Our unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, unassigned fund balance. And the report that you gave us through the agenda for this meeting says that for the current year, we seem to be performing a little better than budget. We're at 17% fund balance and we seem to be on track to improve a little bit even from where we are now. Is that, is that a, I just tried to, I wanted to get to a bottom-line summary there.
I think so. I mean, it's a little early, of course, being only first quarter results, but so far permitting is still increasing. We're in great shape there. We're seeing sales tax increasing a little. We don't have a whole lot to look at at this point, but so far, the trends are looking very good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, but yeah, it's not a question, but in your overview, something that's been in the news a lot this fall, I think is worth mentioning. I will quote it. Although police department overtime and augment pay expenses were running ahead of budget through the first quarter, overall, police salary expenses, including regular and overtime pay, were on budget due to offsetting vacancies. So all the noise that's been made about extra expense that went on has been very clearly explained here and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our presentations and reports. Thank you very much, the entire finance department. We're going to begin the public hearings. Maggie, did you, we've got one conditional use permit. Did you want to swear, everyone, and just when we do that one item?
We do that one.
Okay, okay. So the first is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Residential Development Density Standards in Certain Commercial Zoning Districts in One Residential Zoning District. We have Blake Esselston, who is making his last appearance before city council. If there's anything we can do during this meeting to, so wait you to say, just let us know.
Last appearance in this capacity.
In this capacity, okay. Uh-oh. Woo-hoo, that's very, it's kind of blooming.
I might come back with a sock puppet.
Yeah.
As the title of the wording amendment suggests, this item concerns changes to residential density in selected zoning districts, specifically increases to residential density in most of these districts. There are 12 districts that are affected and it would be an increase in 11 and a decrease in one. I'll start with explaining why staff is bringing this forward. And the staff report used a lot of words to explain this. I'm going to shift to some pictures. In fact, it may help to be able to see these pictures if we, I don't know if we can dim the lights a little bit, but that may help. Thank you, Gary. And for those of you who've seen this item before at the HCD committee or PED committee, these are new visuals, so. This one, not terribly new to most folks, I suppose, but the beige is the city limits. You can see familiar landforms, familiar bodies of water, familiar major roads. And the sort of X-axis here of I-40, I-26, and right here, this intersection, this is downtown. This is the intersection of Patton and Broadway, right near the Vance Monument. That might be relevant as we go forward. Now, this is the area in the city zoning jurisdiction that is friendly to residential development. You can see it's most of the city. So these are areas where residential uses are considered appropriate and residential uses can be permitted in all these districts. However, this is where the existing residential development exists. And I think most folks will be able to see that there's some significant gaps in places where we allow residential development, but residential development has not been occurring. And folks may be able to see that a lot of those are near downtown. Location efficient to downtown or conveniently located near downtown. I will point out that some of these, some of these gaps are institutions. You have UNCA, you have Mission Hospital, you have the Grove Park Inn, and some of these, you might notice, the Givens Estate here, for example, one could argue that it should be classified as an institution or residential, but for the purposes of this map, that was left as an institution. And some mixed-use developments may also not show up on this map. So these are the districts that showed up as needing attention and the previous planning director, Judy Daniel, noticed how low these densities were compared to other cities where she had worked. And it has been 17 years since these, most of these densities were established. The city has changed in that time. City goals have changed and while previous descriptions of this wording amendment talked about how it was focused on commercial zoning districts, I think it's important to realize these are in fact mixed-use zoning districts. There is one, Urban Residential, which was added fairly recently, which is just for residential use, but all the use, but all the others are mixed-use zoning districts. But you can see, there's very little residential development in these districts. While the commercial is allowed, the multifamily residential should be encouraged. The comp plan repeatedly identifies this need, and so staff is recommending increasing density in all these districts, except for what's shown in green here, that's the commercial industrial. And I will come back to that later, the reasons that we're proposing a decrease in commercial industrial, but for the next several minutes, I'll be talking about these districts here. These are the eleven affected districts, not counting commercial industrial. And staff has been looking at how to get new multi-level, multifamily, and mixed-use development to replace low-rise, low-value, single-use development, like what you see here on Patton Avenue. I should note, by the way, if folks didn't notice, this is the silhouette of, or I should say, the shadow of the Google Street View car. Staff was not driving around trying to take pictures on Patton Avenue. But you can see the car dealership here and some kind of low-intensity strip center-type development. Another example would be the area around the Innsbruck Mall on Tunnel Road, which is a very suburban style of development, less than a mile from downtown. So encouraging more residences in these areas is one part of the goal of these amendments, but there's another piece as well. Folks may have seen this graphic from a presentation put together by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. This is showing, it's listing the most common occupations in Asheville and the types of housing that people working in those occupations cannot afford. This slide gives an idea of the scale of the affordable housing problem. I imagine this audience is familiar with the significance of the affordable housing shortage. I'll come back shortly to how staff is proposing encouraging the affordability. How staff undertook to come up with the appropriate increases was to sort of dissect each district and look at things like setbacks, buffer requirements, open space requirements, parking requirements, building height, size limits, other, and multiple other standards. And we didn't just consider this idealized perfectly flat, impossibly flat lot for Asheville as you see here. We actually looked at actual examples, like a lot with these characteristics on Merriman Avenue. What could entice a developer to build multifamily on a lot like this? Or a lot that's developed but not living up to its potential? Would it improve the chances of this building on East Chestnut getting rehabbed if instead of the two units that can currently be permitted there, a developer could put in seven or perhaps ten with efficiencies? The staff looked at a number of variables and came up with this, which pretty much tells you all you need to know. Everyone can read this, right? The point being that there were a lot of factors that were considered, and this spreadsheet let us tinker with assumptions like the average size of a unit and square feet, whether developers were using one building or multiple buildings per site, the number of parking spaces for each unit. And after much discussion and collaboration, staff came up with the numbers you've seen in your staff report. And this is really the heart of the amendment. I will point out that especially the right-hand column here, these numbers, this level of density would be, staff research and analysis has shown that it would be available in a best-case scenario. If you've got a lot that's got utility easement, or it's got topographic issues, or it's got floodplain issues, every developer in one of these districts is not going to be able to attain these, but we wanted to make it available for folks who did have a sort of best-case scenario lot. But many lots will simply not be able to support it. And also, in these cases, these numbers would be achieved only if the development is providing twenty percent of the units as affordable. And as such, there likely, there likely to be some units that are smaller than the typical market rate unit, and perhaps fewer parking spaces provided per unit. To further illustrate what this would mean in terms of affordable units, there is this chart that was also in the staff report, or this table, I should say. And I was told that this table could use some more explanation. Essentially, this column here and this column here, this are the, similar to the two right-hand columns from the previous table, and then these columns are the broken down, or broken out, the number of units that could be provided that would be affordable and would be market rate. And I think a chart may be helpful here. So using the example of the River District, this is the existing density, and then this is the proposed new density, just for market rate. This is without doing any kind of affordable units. Then, if a developer were to provide at least this many affordable units, again, that's just the minimum of twenty percent, she would then be able to put in this much more.
Blake, could you describe the X and Y axes?
Yes, thank you. I meant to do that. So the X-axis here is the acreage. So I know the numbers are small here, but this is one acre, two acres, and the numbers on the left-hand, the Y-axis here, are the number of units available. So for example, currently, for a one-acre lot, we would allow sixteen units. That would go to thirty for market rate, and additional twelve for the affordable would be required. And then if those twelve would be provided, another eighteen market rates could be provided, so for a total of sixty units per acre. Thank you, Councilman Smith. And you can see that these numbers are consistent with what I was just saying here, the eight and the twelve, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong row here. A river would be twelve and eighteen, and those numbers as well. Here I've, and you can see that the colors are a little bit different from the table in your staff report to try and make them consistent with this graphic. So again, just another way of showing it, this is the existing in the kind of rose color here. The blue would be the additional that would be provided just for market rate. Then, if the affordability bonus is provided, that would jump to twice as many, sixty units per acre. And of those, in the purple here, there would be twelve affordable units, and the green is the eighteen market rate. Some have asked if these numbers are too high. And as an answer, I might provide this. This is the Jefferson Apartments, the corner of Merriman and Chestnut, probably familiar to most folks, built in 1925, and it is at forty units per acre exactly, which is the proposed density for CB1, which is the zoning district at this location. Granted, staff does not expect everyone to build a development in the Spanish-Romanesque style like this, but there are more modern examples as well. The Rad Lofts, which was recently approved, that's sixty-four units per acre, very close to the River District. And the Lexington Station Development, which is in the CBD, but it's relatively low-rise, a three- and four-story split design, that Lexington Station Development is greater than seventy units per acre, just as examples. And staff feels that these are appropriate for the corridors, and if the wording amendment is wildly popular, and these start popping up more comfortably than staff or council are comfortable with, this can certainly be revisited. Should also point out that the, like Lexington Station and Rad Lofts, the higher-density developments would probably require structured parking. Earlier, I mentioned commercial industrial. This is the one district where the density is proposed for a decrease, and this came about because a number of developers were looking at commercial industrial for suburban-style multifamily development, and there was concern about the loss of industrial land, land that could be used for manufacturing, that was being supplanted by residential development. So by reducing the density from sixteen units, which is what it is now, to eight units, this is effectively meant to be sort of a moratorium, as staff can perform more analysis on the viability of all these properties and whether, some of them need to be zoned industrial, which does not allow for residential development. There has also been questions about whether this will move the needle, and staff feels that because there's so little residential development in these districts as it is, any increase in residential development would represent a significant shift in terms of the percentage of residential development in these areas. And staff feels that the recommendations in the recommended wording amendment is reasonable, consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval twice. There has been public input from meetings with CAN and CBO have reviewed this concept, as well as multiple meetings before various council committees, Planning and Zoning Commission, et cetera. And staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Do we want to do anything about the lights at this point, or?
One question, Blake. Were there developer conversations about these numbers?
Thank you again, Councilman Smith. I know there are a lot of presentations coming behind me and other public hearings, and I was trying to keep things short, and I did gloss over some things, yes. Staff has indeed had conversations with multiple developers. I appreciate your bringing that up. And Mr. Stoudinger might be the best staff member to comment on those, as he was present for more of them than I, but in general, there was support for these concepts. And they also helped guide the quantitative aspect of it.
We've been over these numbers quite a bit in the HCD Committee, and I know it's a lot for people to get, to comprehend quickly. That long chart you had there, there's a lot of detail that had to be worked through, but I'm quite satisfied from the time, the amount of time we've spent going through this at HCD, that this is a workable plan, it's a rational plan, it's going to help us increase density, and so I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the revised wording amendment modifying residential density in selected districts, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the references to the benefits of higher-density residential development in corridors closer to jobs are widespread in the 2025 plan. Two, encouraging more density on transit routes is also a stated objective in the comprehensive plan. Three, affordable housing, a goal of both the comprehensive plan, City Council Strategic Plan, and multiple other adopted plans would be furthered. And four, the aim to promote more mixed-use infill development figures prominently in the comprehensive plan, as well as the City Council Strategic Plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Does anyone else on council have any questions before we open this up for public comment?
I'd like to offer one comment, Mayor, and this before we let the, have the vote happen and we get past it. Mayor mentioned that this is Blake Esselstyn's last appearance before council as a staffer, and Blake, your coverage of this topic tonight was spot-on, as always. You have so much compassion and professionalism and thoroughness of knowledge, and this is a matter that took a long time to develop and is complicated, and you made it very easy to digest, and that's the way you've always been, and you've been a great staff member for many years, and we're going to miss you, and we wish you well as you go forward. Thank you so much.
And we're hoping you're available on contract. We're going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to comment on this subject, on the, on item A of the public hearings, please step forward now. You can have three minutes. All right. Going once, going twice. Oh, okay, here we go. Don't be shy. Please state your name for the record when you begin your comments.
My name is Kim Roney. I'm a piano teacher in West Asheville, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening. When I read the Comprehensive Housing Strategy and Policy Framework documents available on the city's website, it really concerns me that the median income is listed at thirty-nine thousand, but most of the people that I live in my neighborhood and work with are making half of that, and that the affordable, what's considered affordable housing is only nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars for a two-bedroom unit for three people, and that is just simply not available. So I don't know if this is the right time, because I got here a little bit late, but I just wanted to ask council to please consider the percentage of affordable housing that we're putting in any sort of density moving forward, because we need a lot of it, and we need it fast, otherwise our people who make our coffee and our babysitters won't be able to live here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Hey, guys. Rich Lee, East West Asheville neighborhood. And I just wanted to say, I think this is a great first step. It's imperfect, and it's not going to address the problems of the truly low income, but I believe this is the right move to consolidate apartments along the corridors and protect the cores of neighborhoods. You know, later in the evening, we're going to hear proposals about apartment buildings being off these corridors, you know, they're going to incur costs of tens of hundreds of thousand dollars of infrastructure improvements to connect them to sidewalks that we already built. You know, we already paid to build a sidewalk on Patton, and now we have to connect it in. So anything that encourages people to use the infrastructure we have to make this a safer walking and biking neighborhood, I think, is going to be an improvement. And thank you, guys, for considering and voting on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions before I move forward with vote or any comments?
I have a comment. If there's no one else with any questions. This is a really important night. What we're considering tonight is the leading edge of this comprehensive housing affordability strategy that's been introduced to council, and it's really heartening here tonight to hear a couple of folks get up and tell us that, to encourage us not only to take this step, but to take future steps. I'd like to echo Vice Mayor Hunt in thanking Blake. This came, this almost came in a prior incarnation, this policy, and council asked that it be pulled and went back to the committee level, and Blake has tirelessly worked on it now for, shoot, eight or nine months, I think, to tighten it down into the form it got. And also, thanks to Judy Daniel for kicking it off, and Jeff, and all the staff who had a hand in this. It's been, it's just been great. This has been commited up. It's been through Planning and Economic Development Committee, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Housing and Community Development Committee, Planning and Zoning twice. We've spoken with private developers. Most of the council members had heard it at the committee level before it even came here. It's been one of the most thorough processes I've seen since I've been on council. And ultimately, this is about thoughtful growth in the city of Asheville, and knowing that the affordable housing need is so great, how are we going to accommodate the density necessary to solve the problem? We know that thirty-one percent of Asheville's workers are making less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We know that the average wage for accommodation and food service workers is about sixteen thousand dollars a year. We know that forty-seven percent of our rental households are cost-burdened, meaning they're paying more than thirty percent of their income for their housing. This council is committed to economic mobility for all of its citizens, and without affordable housing, that's not available to the folks that I just mentioned. Of the one thousand one hundred and forty apartments that have been approved since 2012, forty-three were affordable, to people making eighty percent or less of our area median So just, that's one person making about thirty-one thousand, thirty-one four, or two people making thirty-five thousand dollars a year. That's that eighty percent number. And as Kim Roney just said, there's a lot of people making a lot less than that. So we know that this isn't a silver bullet, but it is the first step in this comprehensive housing affordability strategy, and it does begin to address the need for a lot of different price points across the city for people. And so this is, I think that there's some folks in town who wonder, who, you know, who are these people? Kim mentioned piano teachers and babysitters, and it's also, you know, your sons and daughters, and your neighbor's sons and daughters, and your favorite bartender, and the musicians and the artists, and all the folks who keep our town vibrant and lively. When you talk about how creative a city Asheville is, yes, and a large percentage of those creative people can't afford to live here. So unless we make some big changes, we are looking at people living outside the city, the people who work here, living outside the city because they can't afford to be here. And you would see eventually a further economically segregated Asheville. And what this policy seeks to do is to recognize that Asheville values diversity, and that socioeconomic diversity is a big piece of that. And so we want to include it in our land use strategy, in our zoning rules. This is a statement of diversity. Above all, this is part of that thoughtful growth pattern. This is a big piece of council leadership to move forward with this, and it's also about effective partnerships with people in the private sector. And it's also about effective partnerships with people in the private sector who want to build stuff, and who want to be able to help the city achieve its goals, but we've got to make those bottom lines work. There's some great nonprofit entities in town who are building affordable housing, and we, we wouldn't be having any of it without them. This invites all those private developers to the table, to say, we want these partnerships to work, and we want to make it as easy as possible. This is thoughtful growth that builds density on underutilized parcels where we already have the infrastructure. It's where a high percentage of buildings are worth less than the ground that they're sitting on. It's places that are close to employment, close to transit, and where we can build out an effectively integrated multimodal transportation network, where we can make it so that sidewalk, bike lane, greenway, transit combination actually works for people, as opposed to being as fragmented as, as it is now. So this comprehensive housing affordability strategy, you're going to see a lot more coming in, in the coming months. You're going to see, you're going to see affordable housing targets, you're going to see land banking, you're going to see a lot of different policy pieces coming forward. This is the many streams make a mighty river approach. But a healthy vibe in Asheville is going to have a healthy socioeconomic diversity. And that's something that this council has recognized. And what I firmly believe is that if you work a full-time job in this town, you ought to be able to live in this town. So with that, I'd like to thank Councilman Bothwell for the motion.
Anyone else wishing to comment on the, on the item? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have radically changed our UDO in some respects. The next item on the public hearing's agenda is a public hearing to permanently, permanently close a portion of Westover Alley. And I have Greg, there is Greg. Greg Schuler to speak to us on this topic.
You know, one needs to do that.
Greg, first, we're going to see if you can pass a test. Do you know how to, to, Maggie had to step out, so I don't know.
Maybe.
We, we know how to shut off the overheaper. There you go. Okay, great.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be here. Wanted to echo the, the comments on Blake. I think he's already left, but just a huge asset to the city, and he'll be sorely missed by some public works and other coworkers throughout the city. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the resolution to permanently close a portion of Westover Alley. This is different than most of the time I come before you with something like this. We're not closing the road. It's a portion of the road. It's actually a section of a circle. Now, this is what I may need to help.
Well, now you need to go.
Yes.
So there's a property owner who would like to make improvements on their property out there, and this would help with the setbacks and being able to utilize more of their property. And on September 24th, I believe it was, we, we met with the multimodal commission, went over it with those folks, and they approved it. Prior to that, staff met, DSD, fire, public works, transportation, and didn't have any issues with this. While Westover Alley is a dead-end road, just, I think it's north and east, north and west of this proposed closure, there is access to Aiken Alley, which gives you access to Tacoma Circle. So it doesn't require, it doesn't create any ingress, egress issues that we could tell.
Is it just a paper circle? I mean, we talked about a paper alley, but is this a paper circle? The roadway is actually, as indicated on this map.
Yes, ma'am.
Never put in.
Right.
It was drawn 100 years ago, and the alley.
That's what it looks like.
It's, it's, it's grass, or it's turf. It's, it's natural landscape, not paved.
Correct. It is not, it's not pavement at this point, and probably never has been.
Someone was really forward-thinking at some point in time.
Um.
All right. Does anyone have any, does that conclude your presentation?
That concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
You're done.
Thank you for all the help. Get me through this, like, I'm helping the homeowner and everybody in your district, and you know, tell me we should have, I had to do that.
Let's open the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing, but if there's any questions first.
Well, I just, what, the comment I'd like to make is that when, when news of this first came out, there was a general impression in the neighborhood that it was going to close the whole alley. And there was quite a reaction among the neighbors. But now that I see what, what's going on here, it makes a lot of sense to me.
And Councilman Bothwell, I, I had heard some of that, those concerns as well, and, and totally understandable, because usually when we're talking about a permanent closure, it, it is just that. But the nature of this one being a, a paper part of the road, it's, it's actually a section of a circle, but this one was a little unique. But it's understandable why the citizens would feel that way, without having a visual to look at or being familiar with it. I, it took several times for me driving out there. I visited it yesterday just to make sure it was signed properly. And basically, we handled it just like we did any others, but it was different. It's, it's not closing a road. It's closing a section of it. It's not really a road.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to comment on item B of the public hearings agenda, this is the time to do it. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have any questions or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item C has been continued to January 27th, 2015. And on item D, I need a motion to recuse myself.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor to, to approve the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You'll let me know when you get past this.
So that, so that the public understands, the reason a council member might recuse himself or herself is due to a potential conflict of interest. In this case, the mayor has a, an attorney at her firm that represents a party that has interest in this matter, and rules require that she be recused. So that's what's up there. So I'll, I'll chair this part of the agenda. Let me just lay out the, the process we'll go through. I know there are probably people here who would look forward to commenting. We'll first hear from staff, providing the staff report, and Julie Fields will, will provide that. Then we'll open the public hearing. First, we'll allow the developer the opportunity to speak and address council and explain the project. Then we'll move into additional public comment. And first, I'd like to have folks who are proponents of the project, anyone who would like to address council advocating for approval in some form of this project, would go first. And we'll allocate 30 minutes to proponents, use any, up to 30 minutes to do that, and then we'll allow the, any opponents of the project. And there may be people that are somewhere in between proponent and opponent, and we'll let you sort yourself and speak when you might. Rules for the public hearing will be three minutes per person addressing, unless you're representing a group of at least three other people, in which case, you can use up to 10, but you have to identify the other three people. So be thinking in advance about, about those rules, and, and we'll move through this best we can. So with that, this feels.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hunt. Members of council, as indicated, this is a request for conditional zoning for two parcels located off of Hazel Mill Road in West Asheville. The request is, is for rezoning from the current RM8, and this is, these are the two parcels here, to RM16 conditional zoning to allow for the development of the property with 104 dwelling units in 10 separate buildings. Under the current zoning under RM8, a total of 57 units would be permitted. Just to orient you, I think everybody's familiar with this site. This is Hazel Mill Road. The property also fronts on Clayton Avenue, which runs here, and there is a private Road Nancy Street that runs here. So there's, there's frontage on three different streets, one being private. And the two parcels, when they are combined, which would happen if this project is approved, the total acreage for the project site would be 6.5 acres. There are currently two vacant dwellings and accessory structures located on the property that will be removed if the project moves forward. The subject parcel and adjacent, immediately adjacent parcels are zoned to RM8, as you can see on the exhibit map here, with highway business, institutional office, resort, and RS8 zoning in the area. So there's a myriad of different zoning types in that general vicinity. The properties that immediately surround this property are primarily single-family homes and townhomes, with a car dealership, offices, and a church in close proximity. Here is a site plan showing what's proposed. As indicated, the applicant is proposing to construct a multifamily development, 104 units in 10 buildings, and you can see how they are laid out on the site here. The developer tried to work with the topography, the, the property kind of slopes in this direction, tried to work with the property in citing these. Because of previous application that he had brought before you, there was a lot of concern that buildings were much taller and much more out of character with the neighborhood. And so in this application, he tried to address that, and I'll let him, him go into further detail on that when he presents to you. The buildings are a mix of one and two-bedroom units, and they're either two stories or two-three splits with a maximum height of 40 feet. Again, the two-three splits are working with the topography on the site. The developer is proposing that 10%, a little over 10%, 11 units be affordable, meeting the city's standards. And there are a number of amenities, if you look at the site plan, that are proposed on the site, including a dog park, a community garden, and picnic areas throughout the site. The proposal does make a condition that's been agreed to, to meet NC Healthy Built Homes standards on the construction. The access, and this is another thing that changed from previous proposals on this site. In previous proposals, there was access onto Hazel Mill Road, and again, looking at the concerns for traffic issues and safety, now the proposal is that there will be two accesses off of Clayton Avenue. It's also proposed that Clayton Avenue would be widened to accommodate 18 spaces, and you probably can't really make them out here, but 18 on-street parking spaces, but the widening would be conducted so that there would still be two-way traffic, that the parking spaces would not block the two-way traffic on, that exists currently on Clayton Avenue. There are additional, and you can see it throughout the site, 191 parking spaces provided, and the developer is proposing to do those all, not the ones on the street, but all the internal parking spaces are going to be constructed with pervious pavers, and that's above the city's standards. He's also proposing 40 bicycle parking spaces provided. In terms of sidewalks, sidewalks are proposed along both Hazel Mill and Clayton. The proposed sidewalk on Hazel Mill, you can kind of see here, you can make a little bit, it's sort of meanders, instead of being immediately adjacent, and that's for safety reasons, but he's also proposing to, to construct a 10-foot-wide sidewalk at, along Hazel Mill. It would be, I think it's six feet along Clayton. The developer has also, in terms of looking at modal, multimodal transportation, has committed and is, is prepared to make this a condition, to providing annual bus passes, one per unit, for two years from the time the project is completed. The, the project is compliant in all aspects with city standards, or can be compliant, and the developer has requested no modifications. As you know, there have been other proposals that have been made in the recent past for this property, none coming to fruition. I won't go into detail on those. I've provided some detail of the most recent ones in the staff report. In September, the Technical Review Committee reviewed this application and approved it with conditions. Many of those have been met in the site plans that are before you today. The proposal then was considered by the Asheville Planning and Zoning Commission in October of this year, and at that meeting, five people spoke in opposition to the project, citing mostly concerns for things you'll hear tonight, density, character, and traffic. Excuse me, one person spoke in favor at that time. The commission then voted four to one to recommend approval to you. And in addition to the recommended conditions from the Technical Review Committee, and those that had been previously agreed to by the developers, such as the 10% affordable housing and the NC Healthy Built Homes, the commission voted to add two additional conditions, those being that the developer complete a comprehensive traffic study prior to final TRC approval, and that the developer provide the annual bus pass for two years, promised, but in perpetuity, if a transit line is returned to Hazel Mill Road. I think when the transit lines were redone a few years ago, that transit line no longer went up Hazel Mill Road. So if, if that happens again within that two-year timeframe, then they recommended that, that be a condition. The developer has conducted two community meetings, the first being basically to generally introduce the project to the neighborhood, the second one specifically addressing traffic in an attempt to kick off, if you will, the requested traffic study. But subsequently to that, representatives of the Transportation Department, who are here to answer any traffic questions, along with the traffic engineer for the developer, recommended that the study not be immediately conducted, and that the developer not go to that expense, as other options were being considered for the area. We have received a valid protest petition on this rezoning request, so it will require six votes of council for approval. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission both recommend this rezoning to the Asheville City Council, feeling that it meets the council's goals for higher-density infill development and affordable housing. That completes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Let's, any council members that have questions for staff, for purpose of clarification or understanding this better, we'll do that, we'll do that now before we open the public I've got one question for you, Robin. We have, have one, one council member is recused here, so there are six present. A supermajority is required under state law. Is that, is the threshold, six votes for approval on this matter, in light of the recusal?
You have to have, no. Well, you have to have 75% of anybody who's validly sitting here, so that's of six. So that should be, I'm getting my calculator.
75% of six would be equal to four and a half.
So that's five.
So five is, five is the required number of votes. I just, I was trying to do the math in my mind, and I wanted to do it out loud, so I wouldn't. Okay, thank you. Other questions? Okay, great. We'll, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll start with the opportunity for the developer and his team to present. Normally, Mr. Grasso, we, we like to do that within 10 minutes, so the floor is yours. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, council, good evening. On behalf of my brother-in-law, Stephen Leveque, who lives in Charleston, who's a partner of mine, and me, we are happy to be back before you after two years, and presenting what we think is a design that's responded to a lot of the concerns that were expressed two years ago by the neighborhood and also by council. Two years ago, we, we presented a project of 92 units, and it had three large, four, five split buildings. We were trying to keep the, the building footprints to a minimum, and, and try to provide as much open space around the property. We also had a traffic impact analysis conducted for 100, for 108 units, and my traffic engineer, Mark Teague, can address those issues, but it showed that we were not significantly having an impact on the traffic on Hazel Mill Road in Louisiana. So what has changed? What have I done? The first thing I did was I hired Capstone Apartment Partners out of Charlotte. I needed some guidance on what exactly was the threshold of number of units that we needed to make this a viable project? What was the right mix? What was the right square footage? And also, to answer a question that was asked of, of me by you two years ago, what were my rents going to be? I didn't have a clue then. I have a business plan in place. John Akis, the analyst with Capstone, has done a marvelous job on, in guiding me as, as to how this project should proceed. The plan that you see here is a result of that. We're proposing 104 units, as, as Julie said. We've, we've broken it into smaller buildings, and scale-wise, they are said. We've broken it into smaller buildings, and scale-wise, they are, they're conforming with the sloping of the land. We are shaping the land so that these two buildings here will actually be a floor below Clayton Avenue. There was concern expressed by some of the property owners across the street, that their views of downtown were going to be blocked. What they're going to be perceiving is a one-story building across the street from them, because it's a two-story building, but because we've dropped it down a whole floor. So we've tried to build all of the important aspects of what would make this a really exceptional project for the city and for the neighborhood. We have provided amenities, dog park, community garden, benches. We're trying to make it as livable as possible. We have, we're committed to the 10 percent affordable, and our rents are all going to be well within the workforce rent range. And so we're not, we're not trying to compete with projects in the South that have higher rents. We think we're in a unique location. That's what drew me to this piece of property, that we are, we're close to Patton Avenue. Originally, we were on the bus line. I found that very attractive, and that's why I was, I committed to the unlimited bus pass per unit, to encourage people to use the bus, not just say, oh, I'm for multimodal, but actually putting my money where my mouth We have, as I said, we've tried to hit the rents so that it does meet the needs of the community, and it was interesting, just the previous presentation on how there is a need for the city to have more affordable rents. In our meetings, you know, I'm not going to lie to you, we have a protest petition. There's people who don't want change, and I've tried to be sensitive to what their concerns are. One of the big concerns is we have an existing traffic issue on Hazel Mill Road, and that's why we took out the ride-in, ride-out, because the speeds, people speed. There are no sidewalks. It's not safe. And so I committed to having a, putting up $10,000 towards a traffic calming study, so that we could, as a neighborhood, I'm a stakeholder in that. As a neighborhood, we would discuss what our concerns were as far as traffic, and then we would make recommendations back to staff and council. We had, we had our preliminary meeting, and the traffic engineers were there, and Julie was there, and we broke into groups, and I had plans, and everybody kind of marked up what they thought were problems. We haven't submitted any kind of formal minutes from that meeting, because we were going to move forward after, after this meeting with that. In the meantime, there were discussions of, instead of doing a traffic impact or a traffic calming study, because of the concerns that the neighborhood expressed of wanting sidewalks, that would I consider putting money, that money towards building sidewalks off of the property, instead of a traffic impact or a traffic calming study. I agree to that, and actually, I have committed to spending up to $15,000 towards building additional sidewalks. I wish I could give more, but the metrics don't allow me, if we're going to, you know, you're in kind of a balancing act of, you want to, you want to provide workforce rates, and so you just can't spend, 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 in order to keep those rents at the proper price point. So I've committed $15,000. My analyst said I could do that. And of that, we've spent a little bit with the meeting, because I had my consultant there, but the remaining amount will be committed towards providing sidewalks. And I guess, I don't know how we would do that, but I guess it'd be some sort of a check written to the city or something to, for that.
We'll work with you on the logistics of it, I'm sure.
Is this different, Julie, is this a new condition?
Yes, it is.
Can we sort of get specifically, I guess, on the record, so we can make sure that we have it? Are any of the existing conditions or offered conditions, have they changed?
This would take the place of the condition that the Planning and Zoning Commission added concerning the traffic study?
So that's number five?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It would take the place of that. The issue is, he had committed to $15,000 minus whatever he has spent already with the traffic engineer at the meeting that he had, in an effort to try to start this traffic study effort.
Do we, do we know what that number is?
I don't know what that number is.
Mark, do we know how much that is? $1,000? Yeah, it's somewhere around $1,000.
So you're talking about $14,000 being contributed to the city for purposes of sidewalk construction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So just so council knows, what is being proposed is that the existing condition, number five, be removed, and that a condition be written instead that says that the property owner slash developer shall provide $14,000 to the city for purposes of sidewalk construction. And Mr. Grasso, with respect to all of these other conditions, have you consented to those? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And just, I'd point out to council, if there's a council member that ultimately moves approval, the language of motions to approve projects like this needs to be specifically loaded to include the provisions that the city attorney just highlighted. We won't count that against your time limit there. How much time do we have left?
2:16 left.
Okay, yeah, I'm getting pretty close to summarizing.
Okay, great.
So, so that's where we are with, with making, dealing with an existing problem and trying to improve it. This project, I think, is, it fits right in with the 2025 plan. It's infill. It's close to, close to retail, close to businesses, close to transit. It has the existing infrastructure already placed with water and sewer. And so I think it's right in line with what council has been endorsing. And I just ask for your consideration tonight. And I, oh, the other, one other thing, construction schedule. We hope to break ground this spring, and it'll take about two years to complete it, so we're looking at sometime in spring of 2017 being completed. So we're excited about moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. So council members have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions of anyone offering public comment during the public comment period, or as well, we may have questions afterwards. So, great. So with that, thank you. We'll move into the public comment from others. Again, prefer to hear from proponents of the project first, then opponents, and I'll let you decide which camp you might fall into. Three minutes per individual. If you're representing a group and you have three other people with you willing to cede their time, you may have 10 minutes. I would ask that folks that are commenting, pay attention to what others ahead of you say, and if, if we're going to be tight on time, it's helpful to not repeat exactly what a person that went earlier said, because we, we have already heard information. So with that, proponents, please let me know, yes, sir, Mr. Sadler?
Good evening, City Council. I am Timothy Sadler, and I am here to speak in favor of the White Oak Apartment Complex project. Not only will this project help address the issues that pedestrians face on Hazel Mill, there are a number of components of this project that are absolutely at the cutting edge of real estate development. Of course, Mr. Grasso touched on the fact that we'll be integrating monthly bus passes with the price of rent. This will result in a net gain of $22,000 to the transportation budget in perpetuity. One item not mentioned by Mr. Grasso is that we've been in talks with Asheville on Bikes to help address their need for an office here in the city, and Mr. Grasso is willing to go back to TRC and incorporate, and I hate to speak for Mr. Grasso, but, you know, this conversation has been ongoing, that when it goes back to TRC, it will be integrated into the project, an office for Asheville on Bikes. The community garden was mentioned, and I have been in conversation with Lindsay over at Green Opportunities to have the folks there come and give a monthly workshop on how to raise a garden, how to maintain a garden, and how to prepare wonderful meals with garden Beyond all of that, we also, and I say "we," Mr. Grasso and I have been working together on this project to help make it a more sustainable project. And I have mentioned that there is this new product called the Smart Wall that basically takes your energy needs down by 70 percent. And we have been in conversation with the company, American Craftsman, Inc., to try and make the numbers work, so that we can use this absolutely cutting-edge, green building material that will, no doubt, if we use it, put Asheville on the map for having, you know, one of the most environmentally friendly apartment complexes in the world, I would, I would say. So with that, I thank you for your time and ask for your consideration.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak in support of the project, yes? Please come forward to the mic and state your name for the record.
... former school principal. My concern is what effect could it have on the school? Which school is this? It could be Emma and Irwin, or it could be Ash Vance, or Asheville High School. Which is it?
Your name for the record, please, sir.
Roy McGowan.
Okay, great.
Just want to know which district will be affected. There'll be about 200 kids, at least two for each apartment, just about.
Yes, sir, thank you. Julie, I think you're saying we're not quite sure.
I'm not sure.
Okay, we can.
I'm certain that Irwin is a great student. She works on how, she's not in Asheville, but she's good at this place.
Right.
But I'm glad you were out.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, others?
We almost closed, we're not handling that. Please, be examined.
Others wishing to speak in support of the project, or perhaps in the middle somewhere? Okay, well, let's move to opponents. Folks that have concerns, that would speak to not And as you come to speak, folks, state your name for the record before you begin. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Craig Justice. Address is 11 North Market Street. Here on behalf of my client, Harry's Cadillac. They are the car dealership that was mentioned by Julie Cogburn. The concern that I wanted to express on behalf of my client, can I use this? Okay. All right. Counsel, what I've shown to you in red is my client's property, and if you recall from the traffic report, that's part of the record, the traffic engineer noted an easier route, if you will, to get to Patton Avenue, and it happened to be this road here that crosses my client's property, which is a private road, not a public road. One of the reasons I think the traffic engineer noted it being the easier route is because of its proximity to the property, which, property being here, and the fact that this is a signalized intersection here, which allows folks, obviously, then to turn left on to Patton Avenue. There are great difficulties in turning left. You can't turn left down here, and Hawkins Lane, which is right here, you can't turn left. So the next opportunity, really, is Louisiana Avenue, which obviously has the traffic going backwards in order to move in that direction. We just wanted to state for the record our concern about traffic, and to certainly identify or alert the city that my client is considering the option of closing that private road in order to protect their property interest. That is an option. Because it's an option, we would like the developer to take some steps in case we don't explore that option as sort of a balance here. The previous speaker mentioned a lot of cutting-edge things that the developer is willing to do, in terms of having basically presentations on gardens and whatnot. We would like for you to require the developer to make a written disclosure available to the residents of, if you do approve it, this apartment complex, disclosing that the, that this is a private road and is not to be utilized as accessed. I think that's fair, to provide information to residents about the traffic road system, that if you do approve the project, what it is, so they know it. It's just as cutting-edge as identifying how to make a garden, is to help them identify what roads they're supposed to be using. So we would like that as part of the required conditions, that a written disclosure be provided to the residents. And just so that you know, from purposes of the traffic study, it seems that the engineer did point out that this Hawkins Lane generally would not be available for folks, in particular because our intention to close off this private road. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, City Attorney, Robin, is Mr. Justice's suggestion that the city insists on a condition that would have the developer provide notice to tenants, is that, is that in the range of the kinds of things that we can negotiate for or suggest, or is it?
You can ask the applicant if they'll consent to that, and if so, it can be added as a condition. But in a conditional zoning, they have, all conditions have to require mutual consent.
But there's no other snag with that. I just wanted to be clear whether that was.
We can continue. You would have to ask Mr. Grasso's opinion on that.
Thank you.
And for clarification, when you say mutual consent, you could ask for it to be a condition. The fact they say no doesn't mean that that precludes you from imposing it. They just would ultimately say, I don't want the zoning. So I, at least that's my opinion on the topic. Hopefully, the developer will along with the disclosure.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just cite to the statute, which says that only the conditions mutually approved by the city and the petitioner may be incorporated into the case. So what you could do is you could say, no, you're going to turn it down if he won't do it, but you can't impose it on him if he doesn't agree.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Others that have concerns about this project? Did I see a hand back there? Yes, sir. Maybe just taking his jacket off. There we go.
Good evening. My name is Rich Steinhoff. My wife and I own two properties on Townview Drive, abutting the property associated with this project. Basically, I'm here to speak of multiple issues. One, associated with education. It's my understanding that if, since the property does abut Townview Drive, that children of high school age go to Asheville High School in that district. Number two, for the seven years that we've owned the property, there's been expansion in the form of townhouses and Section Eight housing that went up on Nancy Street. in the form of townhouses and Section 8 housing that went up on Nancy Street. Those units, which I want to say number about 15 to 20, have significantly negatively impacted the ability of people to, in vehicles, to get into the area. This will be exacerbated by the buildings on Hazel Mill if it were to go through, let alone emergency vehicles supposedly being given access solely on Clayton Avenue, if I understand it correctly. You're talking of approximately 104 units that will be accommodating approximately 190, 191 parking spaces. And from what I've seen of this area, living in it, owning property in that area for seven years, the amount of increase in traffic to Hazel Mill, forgetting Harry's on the Hill, forgetting getting down to Patton, just getting in egress and ingress and egress to Hazel Mill will be affected. I would say 30 to 40% of the time I come to Hazel Mill Road from Nancy or Hansel, I have to wait over a minute as a single vehicle to make the right turn onto Hazel Mill. And this is, on average, it's not a scientific study, it's based on doing it day in, day out, for seven years. And you're talking about adding something on the order of 190 parking spots, which should accommodate theoretically 190 vehicles. Not all going to be moving in and out during peak times, but they will be moving in and out daily. You have children, parents, some being taken to school, some of these quote-unquote "children" driving themselves to school. To me, these are negative things. I have no idea the impact of my real estate value for my property. I am concerned that it makes the neighborhood less attractive for people to live, less attractive to raise their children. Again, my only true experience is to say in the last few years, two townhouses and a few Section 8 housing has gone in there. It's negatively affected the environment. Nothing to do with the people themselves, their traffic, the flow of traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Thank you, Counsel. My name is Stephen Slack. I live at 264 Hazel Mill Road, across the street from the development. My wife and I often joke that we live on the, in West Asheville, on the wrong side of Patton. While the north side does not get the attention that the south side sees, it's proximity to downtown, the River Arts District, make it a desirable place to live. And so, as an individual, I don't want to see something like this across the street from my house. I don't want to see the buildings, I don't want to see any construction. But as a member of Asheville, I am in full support of its affordable housing initiatives. But with that said, are we going to approve affordable housing without improving the livability of the surrounding neighborhood? Yes, there are sidewalks here, there's a dog park, it's very nice. It's an island in a sea of a very difficult transit situation here. So I work at home, and I've worked at home for the past three or four years. There's a window facing Hazel Mill, right from my desk, and I see every single day people walking, riding their bikes, kids crossing the street. From Nancy Street right there, they walk down, they cross the street, and they access a trail in my yard to get to amenities, groceries, the bus stop, things like that, that make a community livable access to these types of services. So with this increased density, my concern is for the neighborhood and the people that will live there as well. So there's going to be twice as many people on the ground, walking around, whether or not there is an increase in traffic or not, because there already is too much traffic on Hazel Mill. And that is a danger to the people that I see walking through this neighborhood. There's a young gentleman here today who is sitting in the back doing his homework, I think. There he is. He always crosses the road by our house with his friends to get down to the Patton Avenue area. So what I would like to ask is for you to consider an improvement in the infrastructure in this community, if this project is approved. As an individual, like I said, I don't want to see it across the street from my house. As a community member, I understand the need. So what I'd like to ask is for improvements to the infrastructure and access to multimodal transportation, sidewalks, traffic calming measures. And these sorts of things are going to increase the livability of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to address counsel on this matter?
Thank you, Counsel. My name is Matt Burke. I'm a tenant at 20 Townview Drive, which is right near Hazel Mill. This development would go up right behind my house, extended. I just want to echo the concerns about connectivity, safety. I think sidewalks should definitely go in on Hazel Mill to help with safety. As the gentleman said before me, there are lots of people, lots of kids, lots of children, lots of bikers that go through there. Traffic problems are already happening, and I think that sidewalks would definitely help with the infrastructure, would help with connectivity. As a tenant, I do have, I do have concerns just about that going up in the back, that construction, how long it would take and everything like that. And just as the gentleman said, just improving the living conditions, not just in that island, so to speak, but also beyond that. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I was told that I could speak for 10 minutes if I had three, two relinquished.
Yeah, let's see, a show of hands of the three people that are part of the group. Okay, fine, yes, please. And you're welcome to pull the microphone down so it's easier to-
That's all. And I probably won't need 10, but I might need just a smidgen more than three. My name is Valerie Martin. I live at 19 Townview Drive, and I want to thank you first for allowing us the opportunity to speak, and thank you for coming and visiting our homes and listening to us and speaking about our logistical challenges that we currently face. I truly feel heard, and I appreciate all that you're doing for us. I would like to ask the folks that are here today in opposition whether or not they're planning to speak to stand, just so that you can see how many of us that we're representing. Those that are in opposition to this project, would you speak stand, would you recognize? There are more here. The room is at capacity, and they're unable to get in, but just to bring that to your awareness. A lot of these folks have signed the protest petition, and as you well know, there is a, I think we had 44.8% of the property owners that are adjacent to this parcel, we only needed five to get that formal protest petition, and we had 44.8. Some of our signatures were not valid, so you know, there are significantly more in opposition than just those that we were able to achieve, in addition to all of the surrounding community members whose names don't count on that particular petition. Most of these people are against the rezoning of the property based on the infrastructural challenges that we face and the traffic on Hazel Mill. That's the greatest concern that I hear in all of the community meetings that we have. Hazel Mill Road is extremely narrow, barely 17 feet in most of the areas that we're speaking of, from the Patton Avenue to Louisiana, that particular corridor. Hasn't seen any significant infrastructural improvements over the last 50 years. It was installed a long time ago when it was mostly farmland in this whole area, and it hasn't seen the improvements to match the development that has occurred over that amount of time. There's a high volume, in addition to the local traffic that we have, there's a high volume of cut-through traffic during peak hours especially, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Tim Putnam has informed me that 85% of the traffic on Hazel Mill is westbound, people going from town out into that Leicester-Alexander area. So not just the people in this area using it, but a lot of people from town that are cutting through on Hazel Mill to get to the Leicester area. Cars are, is this a? So there are cars that are starting to, so here's the Hazel Mill Road corridor, cars are starting to avoid this traffic light. They have to turn right in order, on Louisiana, instead of having to wait for, you know, traffic gets backed all the way up, and instead of having to wait for a traffic light here, they're starting to cut through on this little bypass to get to Sky View, I think, and then turn right on Louisiana. So this is a very small neighborhood with, you know, supposed to be entirely local traffic, and this is starting to become a cut-through for folks that are trying to avoid that particular traffic light. So that's an issue. People who live along Hazel Mill Road can't safely go to their mailboxes. At the community meetings, we have folks that are concerned about being hit by a car as they visit their mailbox. The road is extremely narrow, and this cut-through traffic is speeding by at high velocity, trying to get out of town. The people who stood a moment ago, most of us, are opposed to the rezoning because we don't have the infrastructure to support it. And we're asking for improved infrastructure. If you guys are going to approve the project, that you also improve the infrastructure to help the community to withstand that growth. White Oaks Proposal states that the residents are going to be granted an annual bus pass, but in order to get to a bus route from, I guess this is the lot right here, the closest bus route is down here at the corner of Louisiana and Hazel Mill, and of course, there's no sidewalk along that corridor. This road is extremely narrow, speeding by cars, trying to get from here to there. So we're asking for sidewalks and improved infrastructure. We need that currently, and especially if the density is going to be increased. The traffic study states that the increase in traffic is not expected to be significant, but for those of us that are living in this community now where traffic already feels unmanageable, any increase is significant to us. We need the improved infrastructure. We're asking for a sidewalk and additional traffic calming measures, a stop sign at Clayton and Hawkins Lane, some other speed bumps along here, something else to discourage the cut-through traffic, that 85% during those peak hours that are cutting through and not coming to the neighborhoods themselves. A lot of us support infill and are opposed, in opposition to sprawl. We see the wisdom in higher density in urban areas, so we're not opposed to the density per se, but we need your help to support it. Like you, we want to make Asheville a premier walking and biking community. This area is an ideal candidate for the infrastructure to make that happen. With a sidewalk along Hazel Mill Road, the people in the northwest quadrant of the city would be able to walk downtown on a connection of sidewalks, on a network of sidewalks. That's a really big deal for us. It's less than two miles. The sidewalks would connect the dense area with the bus routes on Patton Avenue and Louisiana. It's really an artery for this whole community. We have Patton Avenue, we have Louisiana, both of these streets are sidewalks. To connect that with Hazel Mill really opens up the pedestrian travel for that whole quadrant. Please take a balanced approach to increasing the density in our city. Make it where we actually can commute using the multimodal transportation, or don't increase the density, is our ask. We see from your 2025 plan that the city of Asheville will have a network of bicycle and pedestrian routes that are safe and that provide a reasonable transportation choice for the residents. And what we have currently is absolutely not safe. There are children that are currently commuting and trespassing, really. I mean, we are fortunate that the neighbors are not causing more of a fuss about that, and they're allowing the children to trespass on their property. Some are renters that might cycle out, and the next renters might not be as accommodating as those that live there currently. Again, we need, we need infrastructure, we need some sidewalks. The city has said that bicycle and pedestrian travel will be encouraged with the continued construction of pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It feels like you guys want to develop this infrastructure, and this section seems like a good candidate. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we've heard several speakers talk about the need for sidewalks, and recognizing we have one proposal coming before us tonight, I'd like to inquire with the city attorney and city manager, talk about how we might move forward on a second motion relating to sidewalks here.
Chris, before we do that, some of you may know, Councilman Davis had knee replacement surgery three weeks ago. It was very successful. He's having a great recovery. However, he needs to prop his foot up, and he's going to step through the door to the back room there where he can hear the proceedings, he will listen, and he's going to have his foot propped up, and he'll show back up here before it's time to vote, Jan, right?
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you. All right, I just want to make sure folks understood.
Great.
Before we move to that, can we open up a question?
What's that?
Before we move to Chris's, could I ask a question from the traffic?
Yeah, this is just a process question.
Transportation, oh, sorry.
Well, this is clarification question. The public hearing is still open, we still may hear from other people, but let's save as many questions and discussions as we can until after the public hearing, if we can. So, Chris, go ahead.
Yes. So what's the process? If we've got one motion before us, the conditional use here, we'd like to consider a related one, what's the process for forwarding a motion relating to sidewalks?
Well, I'm going to defer some of that to Gary, but we don't have a motion yet, but if there is a motion to approve the rezoning, it would not be appropriate for the city to commit itself in a condition in a zoning case. So we don't want to put that as a part of this rezoning. However, Gary can explain to you the process by which, it's not, it's not that nothing can be done, we just can't incorporate it into this case, so I'll sort of-
And Roman, just to be clear, you're saying we need to resolve the zoning question first, and then perhaps make some other policy decision or guidance? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, great. Gary, please.
And the means to do that would be a motion, as counsel has done before, whether it's your strategic planning process or in other meetings like this, to say, a council member would make a motion stating what it is that they would like counsel to have the city manager and staff build into budget planning, and what priorities you place upon infrastructure improvements, and what you would like to see when the budget, recommended budget comes forward to you in May.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So during the public hearing, questions of the witnesses, the people offering comment? Okay, great. Any other, any other members of the public wishing to address counsel on this topic? We've got at least two.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Nelson, and I live at 33 Nancy Street, and I had no time to prepare an electronic thing a week ahead, so I actually brought you a screen. Thank you.
And if you've got images, you're welcome to use the overhead projector right next to you to let us all see.
I'd like to use that one, but let's, yeah, you can see that.
There we go, thank you.
First of all, I would like to say that with all due respect, it has been suggested that the neighborhood is opposed to change, and knowing most of the people that live in this neighborhood, we're not really opposed to change, we're, everything changes, we're all about change, and most of us are proponents of smart growth. It's just, we're having a hard time seeing how this actually qualifies as a smart growth It's been said that bus passes are going to be provided to the residents of this apartment complex, but I would challenge you all to go to 281 Hazel Mill and try to take a bus Anybody who rides the bus as a matter of necessity is not going to be able to afford $819 a month for rent. To afford that for rent, you have to make $15.75 an hour. City Council just passed an ordinance recently, I heard you talking about it earlier, to pay what you're calling a living wage in Asheville, and that's $1185. what you're calling a living wage in Asheville, and that's $1185. So, if the affordable housing is going to be $819 for a one-bedroom apartment, I'm not sure if we really want to be jumping up and down and cheering that, because there are very many people in our community who that's still out of range for. And actually, the thing I came here to talk about were not those things, but it was about the traffic on Hazel Mill Road, and how the limited sight distance creates dangerous situations at every intersection from Patton Avenue all the way up to Clayton. What I've done here is a viewshed analysis. I've used ArcGIS for this. Essentially, you take a digital elevation model, and you do a line-of-sight analysis from a particular point, and it can tell you which other points you can see. And the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials has published criteria for how much stopping distance that you need to have to be safe in whatever situation. And this is a 30-mile-an-hour road at Hazel Mill. That's the published speed limit that's signed on the road. Nobody goes 30 miles an hour. They all go about 40 at least.
Let me highlight that you're running short on time. The yellow... okay, yes. Three minutes is the limit, and...
Three minutes. Okay. So, what you see here is 180-foot radius, which is conservative. 30 miles an hour, they call for 200 feet stopping distance. Essentially, this analysis that you're all looking at shows that every intersection, all the way from Patton Avenue all the way up to Clayton, which is down here, that shaded parcel's there, none of them have the required sight stopping distance.
Okay.
That was three minutes. It went by so fast.
Thank you, when you're having fun. Yes, sir.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Carrie Dunbar, and I live in the Hazel Mill Community on Nancy Street. The people of Hazel Mill Community traveled through the property. There's a lot of traffic. Adding 104 units will have over 100 cars in this complex, adding more dangerous traffic. The construction is going to take part in commotion and postpone the people of Hazel Mill Community entering the property, and can possibly take effect in the children riding the bus. While I'm on the topic, more kids riding the bus, there's not enough room for kids in the Irwin Middle School District or on the bus. We still want to continue crossing through the property, and the people who are going to move into the 104-unit complex will not be pleased with people walking their dogs, riding bikes, or walking through, period. It is unsafe enough. The area where they are putting the 104-unit complex is like a back road or a safe alley instead of going through the streets. I do not feel like it's a safe or ideal place to add an apartment complex. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments? Yes, sir. Ken, then you... I think he's on his way, so we'll get you next. Thank you.
In Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
That'll be 30 minutes.
That was 30 minutes.
That'll be the next person, 30 minutes for opposition.
Counsel, the total timeline is an hour. I'm going to ask for your guidance as to whether, since we didn't take very much time for the proponents, we're still within the total hour. Would you like to...
Counselman, I'd like to hear from folks. I'd like to hear some from folks who made it up here.
Okay. So, we've got two more folks lined up, and by the time we get through those, maybe we'll be headed toward wrapping up. So, two more for now. Maggie, thank you.
My name is Nathan Merchant. I'm at 299 Hazel Mill Road. I actually do have a few others that will vouch for me if I need 10 minutes for time.
Please realize that you might be preventing others from speaking.
I'm hoping not to take the 10.
And do we have a total of three back there? Did I see three? Three total people? Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
So, I think we can all agree... excuse me. I have lived in this neighborhood for 14 years now. It's not my first time in front of city council where we've addressed zoning issues from one area to another. Some of you I remember, some of you I don't from years in the past. You know, I think we all can agree at this point that the traffic is an issue, that traffic calming is necessary, and it's something that should have been done a long time ago. I know my wife and I, when we first moved to Hazel Mill Road, we had talked to the city, and we were told we were on a list. I don't want to put a lot of time into traffic calming, because I think we already, at this point, have established that it's needed, and it should have been done a long time ago. The concerns that we have on Hazel Mill is, and the things that we feel that are going to be best for traffic calming, just as one little point, would be road humps, because you don't need to do a lot to get road humps done, and you don't need to ask neighbors to give up their property to do sidewalks. You can do road humps right in the road. To issue on the apartment complex, some of the concerns that we have are majority one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. 104 units equals, in my mind, 208 cars. The nature of the units being one-bedroom affordable housing, we understand that affordable housing is needed and necessary, and we need to find as many places as possible to put that. But there is a fundamental reason that this area has not been developed. And I think the council needs to recognize that it's a challenging area, that it has a lot of beauty, but also is not an easy area to develop, which is why it has not been done year after year after year, because a lot of things need to happen before development can happen. At this time, two buses or two SUVs cannot travel on both lanes and pass each other. Back to the 104 units, we're concerned that the quality of the customers of his apartment complex will not beautify the neighborhood, will not have a vested interest in the quality of the neighborhood, regardless of the dog park and the amenities that are there, at the price points that he's charging, and with the small bedroom and square footage ratios, this is not a sustainable neighborhood that he's creating. This is officially an apartment complex. What we would like to see is more sustainable housing. There's no reason in our minds, granted, we are not property owners in that sense, but that you cannot have a wonderful, beautiful, affordable housing neighborhood that have three apartments, that have families, that will take care of their properties, that will have gardens, that will nurture those things. When you have a one-bedroom house or one-bedroom apartment, the sort of demographic of individual that you're going to get there is not going to be someone that's interested in glorifying their property. It's going to have a higher turnover rate. It's going to have more trash. It's going to not beautify the neighborhood in any sense. Just by the property owner saying that they want to do these things, I understand that. And saying that you won't go down these roads is one thing, but the way that people act fundamentally... We've all been in apartment complexes at one point in our lives where we had one-bedroom apartments, and at that point in our lives, we were not the most astute at planting flowers or picking up after ourselves. And I'm not saying anything about youth or anything else, but I'm just saying that fundamentally, demographically, this is not going to enhance the neighborhood in the sense that... and that's why we're concerned. Because if this was something where we would have single-family housing, you could certainly have 12, 15 houses on one-eighth of an acre lots, and you could have affordable houses for people. You could have sustainable neighborhoods that were created, and we would have no problem with this. But I think that you get a very good idea that almost... I do not know of anybody that's in favor of this proposal that actually owns or is in this neighborhood. And I think that's significant, and it has been significant. We're not opposed to change. We're not opposed to growth. We want to see it in a sustainable, really sustainable way. I would love to see this neighborhood be turned into 15 houses, small houses, but family houses. Houses that people would live, they would have gardens, they would take care of themselves, they would look after their neighbors. This is what we want. We don't want one-bedroom apartments. We want houses. Thank you.
Thank you. We had one more commenter here.
Matt Hurley. I live at 26 Town View, right adjacent to the property. The field's pretty much in my backyard. A few years ago, I have a few concerns. A few years ago, I think Mr. Grosso's partner came to me, proposed something about being interested in my property because of the water runoff. It's all uphill for me, so what I'm concerned at is when they start excavating the five acres behind the house there, you know, what's going to happen with runoff. And there was no blueprint on this paper we got, but a couple years ago, there was a blueprint, and there was an 83-inch detention pipe 12 foot away from the back of my building on blueprint, which is a slow-water-release detention pipe with tiny little holes, and all the water goes out of it. Slow release, but it was 12 foot away from my building, or 15 foot. I can't recall the exact foot. But it was concerning. And another thing is, I've had a son. I've had the house 10 years on Town View. I raised a son. It went to elementary, and the schools are very crowded. I don't see how they could put 200 more kids, or even 50 more kids in that school for that matter. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we set out to have those additional two commenters. So, I'll go ahead and pull the public hearing to a close and open it for council discussion, questions of staff, the developer, et cetera. And Gwen, you're bursting at the seams, so please.
Right. One thing is, to the extent that you're having staff speak as opposed just to deliberating, then we should keep the public hearing open.
Okay. Well, the public hearing remains open for the purpose of inquiring with staff. And can we deliberate during the public hearing as well?
I will close the public hearing after you get everybody's testimony in and then deliberate.
Councilmembers, it's time for you to ask questions of staff or others that have offered testimony here tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to... Ken? I have three questions. The gentleman that represented the Harries on the Hill...
Go ahead and state your name.
Ken Putnam.
We know who you are, but...
So, he said that there was a signal on Haywood at the bottom of Harries on the Hill. If they were to close that road, what would happen to the signal?
Well, the signal would remain there. It's at the intersection of that access point, but also Florida Avenue and Patton Avenue, and the signal is definitely warranted. It's a lot of traffic that goes through. There's probably 40,000 vehicles a day on Patton Avenue itself, so the signal's not going to go away.
So, the side signal coming out of a private road would stay there?
Yes.
They've mentioned a couple times that the speed limit on Hazel Mill is 30 miles an hour. Is there any thought about decreasing that? And what's your thoughts on what the folks have talked about, suggesting traffic calming, like speed humps and those kind of things? What would be your input on that, regardless of, well, consider if this project were to be approved and if not?
Right. Well, first of all, let's talk about the speed limit and speeding in general. That's probably the most often asked question for our traffic engineering department. And so, we're constantly doing speed studies all over Asheville, and we're putting our traffic counters out at an average of four roads per week. So, these studies are ongoing all the time. And so, we are always open to listening to citizens' concerns on any road in the city, and taking the appropriate study, and trying to see if indeed, first of all, can we identify that there is a problem, and then would it make sense, would it be, would we see improvements if we were to lower the speed limit? So, there's... those studies are going on, and we can certainly do that, especially tie it in with a new project that would add more traffic to it. So, that's something we can definitely do. As far as traffic calming, one of the things, as you all know, we were without funds for many years on the traffic calming, even though we've had an approved policy since the year 2000. And during this budget year, we now have funds to begin working on our backlog list. So, staff has been working diligently to try to eliminate the backlog list with the available monies that you've given us this year and on into the future for the next three to four to five years. And we're making headway on that. But one of the things that we also have to do, once we start really analyzing the road, to ultimately decide if traffic calming can go on it or not, first of all, we have to work closely with the fire department to see how it will affect the standard of cover. That's number one thing we need to do. We need to see what kind of characteristics are. There are cer... Once we hit a certain grade on a road that's too steep, then we can't put speed humps on, because we could cause crashes, and we want to... that's what we're trying to eliminate. So, that's what we have to look at. So, there's a lot of things we'd have to go through. And also, just in general, once a road reaches a certain threshold of traffic volumes, where it's too high, then the traffic, the speed humps, just don't work.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Follow-up question while you're there, Ken. That last comment you made, the conditions on this road, as we've heard tonight, relate to its narrowness, its windiness, some of the curves that are difficult to see around. And so, when there are concerns about safety, at least some of those concerns relate to the physical characteristics of the road. And I think what you're saying is that congestion is a different matter that can influence safety as well. But is it fair to say here, we've got more of a physical situation with the configuration of the road rather than congestion that really drives the safety concerns?
Well, that's true. But also, this is a unique road in that we do have this odd directional split, where roughly 85% of the traffic is going westbound, and 15% of the traffic is coming eastbound. So, that really tells you that there is cut-through traffic on it. And that cut-through traffic is coming down Patton Avenue, turning right onto Hazel Mill, and then going up to Louisiana, and either going straight through that intersection or making a right turn. Some of them may be making a left turn. Now, all of that 85% traffic going westbound is not cut-through traffic. Some of it has to be local traffic, because if we just assume on a conservative notion that the 15% coming eastbound is all local, then there's probably the same corresponding 15% coming westbound. But that leads you to believe that probably more than 50% of that traffic is cut-through. And then, in the afternoon peak, that's when that traffic would be the heaviest, because they're coming home from downtown Asheville, assuming that that's where they work. And going in the mornings, obviously, they can't make a left turn and go eastbound, because once you get down at the bottom of the hill, you can't turn left.
Ken, any comments? Thank you for being responsive this way. Strategies we might have used elsewhere in town to directly address cut-through traffic challenges. Are there any techniques that are special to that sort of situation?
Well, some of them have already been mentioned in here. Sometimes, always stops can take care of that. Speed humps can take care of that. We always have to remember, though, that once we do that, once we go down that path, we're going to direct that traffic somewhere else. And sometimes, it's to a parallel street that's next to a neighborhood, and then you cause... So, you solve the problem on one street, and you shift the problem to another street. In this case, more than likely, though, the alternative route is Patton Avenue, which is not a bad route to put them on.
All right. Thank you.
That was part of my question, was always stops. It looks to me like, looking... I'm looking at a map right here. If we had three-way stops on that road, it would really cut down on the drive-through. I'm wondering, does Clayton Avenue actually connect to Regent Park? I'm looking at a map that shows it connecting.
No, it does not connect to Regent Park, but what it does, it does connect to a road that allows you to get back to Hazel Mill near Patton Avenue, but then at that point, you'd have to turn back to the right.
Okay. This MapQuest map is wrong, then. I was thinking Regent Park has a light, which would have been helpful.
Right, right.
And, okay, the other question I had concerning the information about Harries, that Hawkins Lane is the one that goes past Harries and goes down to Patton.
Yes, that's correct.
That might be a likely way for right turners, but there's no way to get a light there without the state, right? Because that's a state road.
Yes, you're correct about that. And with the closeness of the other signals there, I doubt seriously that that would work. And then, that private access that turns off of Harries, into Harries' property, that's off of Hawkins Lane.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Please stay here. I think Gordon has a question.
Is this already a no-through trucks? Is Hazel Mill a no-through trucks? There's a voice telling me yes. It may be in here. I don't know.
I was going to say that I didn't know for sure, but it sounded like a strong yes.
Great. Thank you. Any other question for Ken while we've got him? All right. Questions, council, clarifying questions for staff, anyone else in the room? Okay, let's close the public hearing now, and we'll move to the deliberation phase. Robin, thank you for organizing this so well. We're doing better than ever on this...
You're doing it all.
All right. So, deliberation, council. Discussion or a motion?
One item of discussion. I know we can't hook this to this development as one of the conditions, but it seems, it appears to me that we absolutely have to build those sidewalks if we approve this development. sidewalks if we approve this development. We kind of made our own problem there when we improved the transit routes and took the buses off of Hazel Mill. I mean, so that we've, we've, not just the people who might live in this development, but other people in that neighborhood can't get on a bus easily without walking on the street. So I would strongly support the idea that we act separately to create sidewalks, both to Louisiana and to Patton.
Additional comments? You know, Cecil, just on that theme, I, this is actually an extraordinary moment where we have folks in the neighborhood thinking very creatively and expressing community-wide needs and views regarding how a project might fit in. I really appreciate that a lot. And for me, having gone out there and visited and looked around, it helps me appreciate better how we're always going to have a challenge of, you know, pace of development versus adaptation of infrastructure. And I've said a couple of times to people lately, you know, once upon a time, we had a dirt path along a river where people from Tennessee were going back and forth, taking livestock to South Carolina. And since those days, 200 years ago and beyond, we have gradually adapted development population with infrastructure to support it. And just the comment is that this really helps me appreciate how it's our duty to get that right. We've got to be well-planned, and we've got to make sure that we act in a time. You know, along those lines, though, I will say that I hope the public understands the challenge we face when it's suggested that, you know, please don't allow development in a certain place until you do the infrastructure. Well, we've got, we've got deficient infrastructure for projects like this all across the city. And it's just impossible for us to act first with infrastructure and predict where the next development is going to go. So I just, I want the public to understand that we have that really difficult challenge of how do we, how do we match those, how do we match progress up in those two ways? But I appreciate your comments, and I agree with the points you made, Cecil. Other comments here, Chris?
Yeah, real quickly, Vice Mayor. We've, you know, this is an interesting case example of competing strategic demands of the city kind of coming in conflict here. We, you've heard earlier tonight about the strong emphasis on expanding our affordable housing options. And we acted tonight. And I'm really excited about the earlier action council took and the promise that it brings here. But at the same time, we've also committed ourselves to greater mobility for our community here and giving people options for getting around in the community here. So I think you're hearing from council tonight that we're going to commit it, if we do approve this proposal here tonight, the resounding proposal, we're also committed to trying to help ameliorate the impact on the surrounding neighborhood here, to give the Hazel Mill community greater options as well, too. So with that, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the conditional zoning request for White Oak Grove Apartments on Hazel Mill and Clayton Roads with residential multifamily medium-density District RM8 to residential multifamily high-density conditional zoning RM16 CZ, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following way. One, the plan for, the plans for increased density on this site further city goals promoting high density, higher-density residential infill in appropriate areas. Two, the plan for 10% of the units to meet the city's affordability standards, respect city goals, working to address the needs of the community for increased affordable housing.
I'd like to offer a second, but before I do, to the maker of the motion, I just wanted to clarify that we're replacing Condition 5 with the $14,000. And further, I want, I wanted to inquire Councilman Pelly if we'd like to ask the applicant whether he's interested in agreeing with the proposal from the Harry's on the Hill folks about notifying his tenants regarding the, about that road being a private road.
Thank you.
Yes.
With that, I second your motion.
And to be clear, does one of the conditions now include that he will provide notice? You say you're agreeable to that, Mr. Grasso. And does this motion include the provision that the developer?
That's correct.
Owner will provide notice?
Yes, and I guess, Mr. Justice, are you still here? Can you maybe specifically spell out exactly how you want that condition? And you and Mr. Grasso, so we can know, do you want, what kind of notice are you talking about? And what kind of notice is Mr. Grasso willing to do? I just want to make sure that it's unambiguous in that condition, in case any question comes up.
Good move. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration of that request. I think there are two potential places to clarify how notice can be delivered. One is that it, notice, written notice be posted at conspicuous places within the development. If there's a community clubhouse, for example, that it be posted within the community clubhouse. If there's a bulletin board, it be posted at the bulletin board. And it'd be of a sufficient font and color that it does attract attention. Also, that obviously there will be leasing of these apartment units, and that as part of the materials provided with the lease, that notice be provided with that. And the notice can be very simple, in just a notification to residents that the road off Hawkins Lane that runs through the Harry's Cadillac property is a private road, and to respect that, and it's not available for access to Patton Avenue. Something similar to that, not overly complicated.
And you can get me like a PIN number or something, so we can put it in there?
That's fine.
Okay. And so you're good? Posted notice? And notice in the lease?
Very reasonable.
Okay.
I love it when people get along. This is great.
[laughing]
Okay, so we've had a motion in a second. We can, additional discussion, deliberation? Mr. Davis?
Just one word. And I know Mr. Justice has been retained by the Patton family, but somehow I feel a disconnect there, because having known the Pattons in Bloomberg for a number of years, I would find it strange that they would want to turn their shoulder to that community, not just the people, the future residents, but the people that are living in that community. I would suspect that they like your business toward buying a new GMC or a used car from their lot, and have been a good neighbor for many, many years to that community. I would find it, it's kind of sending the wrong message right now, Craig. I really regret that y'all are doing that.
Well, let me be sure I did it right this. Certainly, this road being a private road, there is a, there's a collision between people who come and are asking for the services of Harry's Cadillac in their parking lot. And certainly, Harry's would encourage that versus people who just want cut-through traffic to Patton Avenue.
I understand completely, but you've been good neighbors for many years.
And as a good neighbor, I think it's, I guess we're not, we are, our main point was to allow that issue to be public so that we could handle it in a very reasonable, balanced way.
You've made that point very well.
So I'm hoping that it's not a bad message. We just want a balanced message.
Thank you.
Just one more comment, Vice Mayor Hunt? I just want to say that this is, I just want to thank everyone who's come out tonight, and especially the conversation between the residents and Mr. Grasso, and being able to try to come up with some creative solutions tonight. I'm certainly going to be supportive of adding necessary infrastructure as we're adding needed density to this area. I don't know if this is always going to be the right formula, but I think here it absolutely is. And it's a great example of a partnership between a developer and a neighborhood and city government coming together to try to, everyone get their mutual goals met. And it's an opportunity for us to be able to backfill some infrastructure, where, as Valerie Martin said, it's about 50 years overdue.
Additional discussion here, council? Okay, I'll remind that it requires at least five votes out of the six members present for this motion to prevail. No other comments, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passage announced, we're five to zero. Excuse me, six to zero. And having, this is the matter from which the mayor needed to be recused. And Councilman Smith, if you will retrieve the mayor, we will now discuss public infrastructure, I think, for your desire, Mr. Pelly, on Hazel Mill Road.
So Vice Mayor, I would like to move forward on giving priority to Hazel Mill sidewalks, therefore make the following motion. I'll just maybe give it a minute here, there.
Yeah.
I'd like to make the following motion. I move that City Council direct the city manager to investigate, giving funding, funding priority to the Hazel Mill sidewalk sections discussed tonight during preparation of the fiscal year budget for the FY of 2015 through 2019 Capital Improvement Plan, with design work to be anticipated in fiscal year 2015 and construction thereafter in fiscal year 2016, and to report back to council. This motion is made with the understanding that advancement of the sidewalk project should be contingent upon satisfactory progress of the development and the granting of easements necessary for sidewalk construction, and completion of the public sidewalk, public sidewalk construction would be timed to coincide with completion of the final phase of the development.
Second. Okay, so we have a new motion in a second. And you're chair in the meeting now, so I'll let you do that. Thank you, Mayor.
I know, it's funny that. Do we have any other, do we have any questions from council regarding?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank Councilman Pelly for his leadership on this. He's done a really nice job of kind of getting us to this place. Thank you.
All right, anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right.
Mayor, just a comment. There's some detail to that motion, one of which, one element of which is that doing this infrastructure is going to be contingent on getting easements to install the sidewalks. And that is going to be, mean, working with property owners along the way. I think what you've heard tonight is, you've got a council, those of you that are interested in seeing the infrastructure along Hazel Mill improved, you've got partnership here among council and staff. And it's going to take continued work and partnership on your part to help these easements come together so that we have a nice flow toward sidewalks ultimately. And that requires negotiation, et cetera, with property owners. So just realize that we've got work to do. Thank you.
Ken, I'd like to add something to that.
Ken Putnam, Transportation Department Director. Just one clarification. We are currently in fiscal year 2015, so we need to revise the motion to say that design would take place in 2016 with the construction in 2017. Then that will coincide with the anticipated opening of the project. I think you might have said 15 and 16, instead of 16 and 17.
I did. We're in 15 now. So we're in 14.
We're in 14.
We're in 14.
We're in, well, we're in fiscal 15, I believe. It ends June 30th, 2015.
Okay. So we want to amend this to say that the improved, design work to be anticipated in fiscal year 2016 and construction in fiscal year 2017. You got that? Does that sound right, Robin?
I defer to Gary here as to the timing of the budget year.
Specify whether or not you want this in the July 1, 2015 budget or the July 1, 2016 budget?
Whatever begins next year.
The July 1, 2015.
Yes.
Those darn fiscal years.
And I can just say also that the intention is to try and coincide these improvements with the development improvements as well, too.
Who seconded that?
Cecil.
Cecil, so you're okay?
Yeah, and I accept those amendments. Yep.
All right, and we already asked anyone if they wanted to make a comment. No one did. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving on to the next topic. Give everyone a chance.
Mayor, will we be having a break during a closed session?
Do we have a closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
But can we take it?
Yeah, well, you want to do the closed session? Let's do the closed session.
Can we do the closed session?
Okay. It's all.
So you want me to just?
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that's privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318.103. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. Two, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A4. And three, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A3.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session. We will go into closed session till about 10, 10 till, is that enough time? Till about 10 till 8:00. And when we return, we'll take up Item E on the public hearings agenda, the River Mill Loft. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Except you're missing half your count. Oh.
There's four.
Wait, I thought we had. Close enough.
Coming out of the woodwork now.
We're moving on to Item E on the public hearings agenda. A public hearing to consider conditional use permit for River Mills Loft located off of Thompson Street. Alan Glines. Remember, this is quasi-judicial. We've got to go through some. So anyone who thinks that they may testify, make comment at all during this hearing, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, needs to come up and be sworn in. So anyone in this room who thinks they might at some point come up to this microphone during this portion of the hearing, needs to come in and be sworn in. You can change your mind. It's, you don't have to totally commit, but this way you're taken care of. Maggie, we got a couple others. Hang on just one second. So this is for River Mills Loft on Thompson Street.
No, no, you left him.
You're being, you're being, yeah, you can swear or affirm, either way.
Do you sign or do you swear or affirm?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, members of the public. Considering a conditional use permit to construct 254 residential units with a limited amount of commercial space at the corner of Stoner Road and Thompson Street. This Exhibit A map represents the area. It's a total of nine, nine and a half acres. The property is fronting on Swannow River. The road crosses through it, and then there's the other area here. That one, unfortunately, is, if I can do that. This is an aerial of the conditions today. This building is no longer there. There are commercial uses here and here, and this property is largely vacant. Thompson Street crosses through the middle, this is Swannow River, and this is Stoner Road. This is the road. Road. This is the railroad track at the back, which also has a 100-foot overlay for, has an east For additional context, this is Thompson Street here. This is Biltmore Village, and this is the site. And this is Stoner Road climbing the hill. This was the project we're not reviewing tonight, but that's the site for that. There's a number of commercial uses in this area, some industrial, and it's been a bit of a mix in this part of town. And just for additional context, I'll print one more map just for the areas sake. This is Biltmore Village here. This is Thompson Street coming off, goes all the way over to Glendale and further on and crosses the river here. This is Biltmore Avenue, Hendersonville Road, and Sweeten Creek Road coming in here. So we're kind of right in this location here. This red represents the section of Stoner Road based on partial. And this is a site plan. I'm going to go ahead and blow that up just a little bit. This was all in your packet and also online. So orientation one more time, this is Stoner Road, this is Thompson Street, that through the middle in orange. The project consists of two large structures, L-shaped. This is known as Building A and Building B, parking in the rear, two access points. One on Stoner Road, this is a two-way access point here, one on Thompson Street, two-way access point here. This is sort of the river's bank right here across the road. It's part of this parcel. I went ahead and drew in the blue line here. This is the floodway line, and it has implications for developing this parcel. In addition to that, this area at the rear by the railroad track represents another buffer requirement for the back of site. So those both have bearing as we kind of consider this project. So the applicant, Pace Burt, is proposing mostly a residential project. It would include 254 residential units made up of 248 two-bedroom units and six three-bedroom units in those two large structures, and there would be a limited amount of commercial space located at corner locations here and here on the land. And about 4,000 square feet, non-residential. We're going to be flexible with that space because there's not a lot of commercial demand down there at this time.
My water.
But those corners would be activated. The project contains the two driveway points. There are 327 parking spaces, so we're parked within the range of the UDO's requirements, and there are at least 18 parking spaces at site. The front area in urban place, sidewalks are required, and sidewalks would cross, you know, when we develop property, we're typically looking at, from the requirements of the developer, at their property. So a 10-foot wide sidewalk along Thompson Street, along the building side, and a 10-foot wide section of sidewalk, sidewalk along Stoner Road to a point of about here, and then they're asking for a modification from council to reduce it from this point on due to the limited context of urban place going past the site where the developments happen. They're asking for that. In addition, there are a number of sidewalk connections internal to the site. This is the clubhouse amenity area. There's a sidewalk here that connects through the parking lot and over. These sections here has a sidewalk down through the development. In addition to those sort of site amenity features, there's obviously site landscaping, landscaping all on the street. This is a bio-retention pond, or not exactly a pond, but a treatment that would be planted and would take some of that first flow of water off the parking lot and use and treat it before it hits the Swannow River right here. So it's a, we'll call it esthetic. Open space is required in a project like this, and it equals, it's in an urban place area, it is to meet at least 5% of the lot area, which is about half an acre, and we really have it covered between the amenities here at the clubhouse and what's across the road, so we're going to be considering it from that standpoint. The urban place zoning is meant to be an urban-style development, not so suburban, so we are balancing out relationship to the street, a wide sidewalks, areas for trees, plantings, and then this buildings, these structures would be pulled, normally pulled quite close to the street to make an urban product. The floodway, though, has bearing here, and in a floodway, you really can't do any development. You're very limited. Maybe it's a difference of six inches over this whole area here, so nothing can really encroach into a floodway. And the floodway is the column of water that moves in a flood event. It's that pouring of water down the river, and you have to stay out of it. So the building is required to step back from that and also be elevated above the flood stage. So the point of grade of these buildings is about 10 feet above the grade of Thompson Street. Just the way it is, there's no flexibility with that. It's all required. So this is, to make this safe and to make this flood-proof, it's got to go up. But at the same time, we have a setback issue with urban place because we're trying to make that relationship happen, and it's a 15-foot requirement. You can go no more than 15 feet back from the road edge, if you will, the property line. So what we have, the original plans, the building was pulled quite forward to sort of address the setback requirement, and we kind of created a real challenge to meet that integration with the street. And so what they have done is they're asking for a modification for a setback in order to provide a greater space to terrace walls and that sort of thing, so you don't have just a solid wall right behind the floodway line, essentially. So they're asking, it's in the motion, but there's a range of placement. As you see, the property line varies with the road alignment, plus the floodway is sort of not consistent all the way through. So they're, we've got a range to cover, really, really Thompson Street and Stoner Road for this building, and then Building B to just be the port and front. In the difference in that area that would happen at the street, they would, this was sort of recommendations and motions from other groups that review this plan, would include steps, like monumental stairs at the corner, plaza space at the top, if they had the room, if this is approved by you all. Terrace is here that would be, maybe has some plantings and some other treatments to soften the effect of the 10-foot grade change that's going to be at the floor of the building, essentially. And so that's the scenario I sent you all earlier. I'll put this in the record for this discussion tonight. This is what I sent for consideration earlier today based on questions from council. It's sort of a treatment here that's going to have stairs and a ramping system to get up to the building for that 10 feet. And then for the second building, Building B, this section here is here in the driveway section, and they're doing a similar treatment here. Steps, some stairs up, some terracing and other things. So if they can get the approval for the setback, they'll approve it still with softening the wall. In the area just past Building B, there's that bio-retention, that's BMP, and that will, that will be softer. It won't have the same effect of Building A at the corner of Stoner Road and stuff. We shared, the development team shared elevations, and so the two buildings sort of create a horseshoe effect, and this is portraying Building A, and this would be the corner location. This is the commercial kind of corner here at the side. This is showing that initial, the initial submittal did not have the setback in place, so the walls weren't designed at that time. And that came out of, you know, further discussion with River Commission and staff and other folks, P and Z. So this wall will be softer, but the building sort of footprint and design here would sort of follow this alignment here, a variety of materials, sort of kind of a modern aesthetic. The project was reviewed by the River Design Subcommittee and then was eventually approved by the River Commission as part of this process. Here's another kind of axon, axonometric drawings. This would be the corner of, a Stoner Road coming in here, and then the wall, so we're going to soften that with stairs, and then, you know, going up along Thompson Street. And then, so the idea would be to set back more to get these walls a little softer. So those two issues with modifications are in your, are in the staff notes, in the staff report. As I said, urban place is, we're balancing the needs of an urban-style district. It's infill. It's an air, is directed for areas that are blighted or underdeveloped and/or areas that we want to see redevelop. So this is, this would fall into that category. In 2013, the property was brought to you all for consideration for rezoning, so it was rezoned to urban place, and so because of the scale of the project, it becomes a Level III conditional use permit. So that's why we're reviewing it this way today. The Planning and Zoning Commission spent a lot of time on discussion whether this is a great site for urban place, whether the project was an urban place type of project, and at the end of the day, they voted in favor to support it. There was discussion about that, though, and what, I think what we came away with at that meeting was soften the effect of the wall, but also recognize that not every project can be a complete answer to a community every single time, all the time. So this is one parcel. There are many parcels up and down this corridor. This one's going to be a residential-focused project. The next one might could, might could be residential, but also some more commercial, so it balances out the urban form, and so as a district, it becomes more of a full-on mixed-use district, and we just, we're at the initial stages of that at this location. As part of a conditional zoning finding, there are seven standards. We've reviewed those as staff. We've discussed it. Planning and Zoning Commission also considered it. We point out, we note that among the infill and other goals, the Wilma Dykman Plan, the affordable housing discussion, and that's, the developer will speak to that, to you all at this hearing. It's not in the proposal right at this moment, but he is willing to come back and discuss the topic with you all as part of a land use incentive grant. Now, as you know, the way the land use incentive grant works, it's for you all to approve, and it's discretionary on your part. They submit a narrative, if you will, about their project and what it means to the community here, and try to make their points work, and then it's still up to you all to consider and approve. And recently, I guess about midsummer, you all had a similar type of process for the Rad Lofts. It was approved in the fall, and it, the project came back for a land use incentive grant and was approved. So it's something to consider. As I said, the project was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the River Commission as well, and was recommended for approval. And with that, I can answer any questions for you or just let the public hearing continue.
I had a question. We did get an email regarding concern about the piece of the property that's on the other side of the road abutting the river.
Okay.
And how that intersected with the Greenway Master Plan or potential changes to River Road, traffic, traffic changes. Can you address that or talk about that?
Well, we did, it's a great question. I think the email may have come to someone else, but when we initially reviewed the plans, we did study the Greenway maps in our GAS layers, and actually, they're on the other side of Swannow River. They're on the Swannow River side, not on this side. But this site and area is part of the Wilma Dykman Riverway Plan, which was, this is sort of a short version of it, it's the executive summary adopted in 2004, and that plan would suggest that on the, this is called the Swannow West, that we would have facilities. It may not be the main greenway, but there would be facilities here for this, for this area. And the deal is right now, we just have not gotten to this part of the river yet from a study standpoint. We've spent a lot of our time in the Rad tip area. We've had success with that, and we're just not over there yet. So this is coming in early, in a sense, from a planning standpoint for this roadway, but I think what's here can accommodate a future, a future parallel pair, maybe if that's the answer for Thompson Street. What was approved in the, or recommended in the Dykman Plan, which was conceptual, was there would be a one-way pair. Swannow would head westbound and Thompson Street would head eastbound, but of course, we need more bridges to kind of make that happen, so there's kind of a lot of moving parts. No pun intended.
Now, let me, let me speak to that just a little bit. Jan and I sit on the MPO, and just last week, the state DOT released its draft transportation improvement plan, and the Swannow River Road Improvement Project actually appears to have made the cut at this stage for full funding within 10 years. And they do it in two tiers. There's the first five years and the second five years, and the second five years is a little softer, but this project appears to be funded for the redo of Swannow River Road. It is on our Greenways Master Plan. I know from experience with our Greenways Master Plan that when, when we draw a line on a map, it's not specific locational. In fact, it can be on either side of the river, and so what I anticipate is that if DOT, as DOT refines the configuration it might envision for this project, they, because we, it's on our Greenways Master Plan.
Right.
The state is obligated to work with the city to integrate our Greenway Plan with their roadway plan, and I think you're exactly right. It's, the work hadn't been done, it's early to tell.
Right.
But I do think that for the purpose of this project, we should consider that improvements are coming to the roadway, and
Right.
We, because of Wilma Dykman Plan and the Greenways Plan, we hope it will be aesthetically much more positive than what is there now.
Couldn't agree more.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
What, Robin, did you have a?
I was just going to make sure before you sat down that you let the applicant know that there is a right of cross-examination and to make sure that Alan puts in any, anything in the record, his staff report or any other documents that he has.
A right of cross-examination of Alan.
Any witness, yeah, Alan, so the applicant or anyone represented by council, that would be.
Alan, just a couple of questions. One, regarding the open space, it was hard to read on the map. Is the stormwater BMP part of the open space?
I would have to look that a little closer, but I don't believe that it's considered to be open space.
See some head shaking from the crowd here.
Yeah, it's shading, I think, because it's a different treatment.
And the corner with the monument steps, the terraced corner, is that counted towards open space and is that public space?
If, open space can be public or private. It could be open only for guests or residents, or it could be completely public. So in this case, it could count if it's, the scale is there for it. We'll have a final review of all the planned details, but if it's a certain size, it could count towards open space. If it exceeds, like, if there's a specific dimension, it might be 10 feet. I need to check that.
As far as creating that integration and pedestrian experience, I'm just wondering if it'll be available for people who are coming by rather than living there.
Well, that's the intention, absolutely. To make, really to be welcoming.
Thank you.
That's the whole design of monumental stairs, is kind of to direct your attention up, so they hope to make it successful there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to hear from the applicant.
Right, and just making sure that the applicant doesn't have any questions for Mr. Glines. Okay, and then the applicant. Did you hand up your?
Yourself and.
I said, did you hand up your? Okay, all right. Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carlton Collins. I'm with McMillan, Pasden Smith Architects here in Asheville. I just wanted to say by way of brief introduction that we have enjoyed working with Mr. Bird on the development of this project. Although we are early in the design phase, we have been working to keep things simple but compelling, hopefully, in terms of what this might mean on this important site along Thompson Street. We've been thinking about how to address the river, how to address pedestrian connectivity, how to make it urban, have an interesting use of materials, and really hopefully set a good precedent for what might happen in this, in this river corridor along the Swannow River. We are trying to set up, as you have heard a little bit in Alan's explanation, how we might address the Greenway Plan and some of our planning, and I will let Clay Mooney address that in just a moment in a little bit more detail. With that in mind, I do want to turn it over to Clay, our landscape architect, and let him talk in more detail about some of the features of the site. I also have with us tonight Tara Hile, who is our project architect, and we can discuss in more detail any elements of the architecture that you might wish. Thank you for having us here, and we look forward to hearing your comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Clay Mooney. I'm a landscape architect here in Asheville with Design Associates. I'm a landscape architect here in Asheville with Design Associates. I want to echo some of what Carlton said with regard to the, actually what a pleasure it's been to work with, with Mr. Glyns on this project. He's been most helpful. We've had a very good discourse back and forth, very constructive. And he did quite a complete job with, with a summary of this. But I am going to try to hit some of the highlights and reinforce some of the more important aspects of this project. As Alan said, we have landscaping, the entire parking area also out on the, the streetscape. And all of our landscaping meets the requirements set forth by the UDO. Again, all we have shown are the minimum requirements established by the UDO. As, you have to understand, this is a conceptual plan. We're just trying to show that we meet the minimum aspects of the UDO. As we go forward, creating our final documents, we're certainly going to be augmenting with additional plantings as, as necessary. Particular, in the areas as, as was mentioned with the monumental steps, we're trying to, to soften the, that 10-foot vertical separation between Thompson Street and a finished floor elevation. So that was one of the important things that through every review cycle, if you will, that was brought up. There was this concern of how that 10-foot grade change adjacent to Thompson Street was going to impact the pedestrian user. So with each step that we went through, whether it was TRC, and then it was just with staff review, general conversations with Alan, it was a real back-and-forth process of trying to improve this, and that is what you see right now. To highlight, this is kind of a repeat of, of what Alan showed, but this is the corner of Building A, illustrating how we've utilized a ramp to provide ADA accessibility up to the main floor level. Again, we've got to traverse 10 vertical feet. We have monumental steps that are inviting, that are along the pedestrian way. To answer Councilman Smith's question, these were not calculated in part of the open space, but they are, I mean, it's meant to be inviting to the general public, anybody that comes by. Our open space, or the city's open space requirement, has some specificity as to what could be considered open space. In fact, we could consider if we needed basically all of this area across the street as far as open space. Now, there are some slope restrictions as to what we could do, but we're also able, as we have shown here, any recreational or the clubhouse area could be open space. We just show this corner just to be able to show a definite size to illustrate to staff and anybody that reviews to council that we do meet the minimum requirements for open Back to the corner treatment of the buildings, this is Building B. Again, we have a similar situation with monumental steps at the corner, with some planters here and along here. These are stepped walls. So there's, we probably, I'm envisioning something in the range of three to five feet for the first wall. Then we'll have some plantings to soften that. That would be located in this area, going up to another five-foot wall for this terrace at the finished floor of the, of the building. And so that's a, a similar treatment for both. And so again, that was a real, what I think was a successful collaboration with all the reviewing agencies that have reviewed this project. The Stormwater BMPs, that was another important thing that we are trying to do. As Alan mentioned, we're utilizing this space here for a wet detention basin. That's located within the floodway. This is one of the few things that we can place within the floodway. Now, it's not a, a vertical change in elevation. It's actually something that's excavated. So it is below that flood, or the finished grade elevation. So that's one of the ways that we could utilize some of this area that is within the floodway. It's also going to be, not only is it a detention, but it's also a water quality basin that we're using. So I, I think that's one of the important space utilization things that we've done on this project. In the back, to capture some of the runoff from the rear parking area, we have a subterranean storage and detention area. Again, we'll be meeting all of the requirements that the UDO and the Public Works Department has with regard to stormwater control. Alan mentioned some modifications and a variance that this project was requesting. The, the variance that the planning and zoning reviewed and approved was the expansion of the building setbacks. Again, that was due to the elevation caused by the flood elevation. We have to be 10 feet. The finished floor has to be two feet above the one-hundred-year flood stage. And so that is what ultimately has allowed us to create these terraces. Previously, it was a maximum 15-foot building setback, which just 15 feet to have a 10-foot grade change really made it quite an insurmountable design problem. So that was why we were requesting the, excuse me, the modification. The variance, I'm mistaken on the variance, they have those switched. The variance was the, within the, the urban place, along your lower elevation, you have to have openings a maximum 60 feet apart. Our variance request was due to the fact, again, of this 10-foot vertical rise. It just really was impractical for us to have openings for our commercial space spaced 60 feet apart. So we made a request to change it to where the openings were concentrated at the corners where we have them shown, and planning and zoning voted positively for that variance. The second modification was the, we made a request to reduce the sidewalk width along Stoner Road just past the ramp area. Urban, Urban Place, as Alan mentioned, requires a 10-foot wide sidewalk along street frontages. And we have absolutely no issue with that along Thompson. We have no issue with it up where it's adjacent to some parallel parking spaces that we were proposing. However, to the design team, and particularly to me, it just seemed excessive for the amount of potential pedestrian traffic that would be traveling from Stoner to need a 10-foot wide sidewalk. It's just one of those things, if we don't need to pave the world, let's don't pave the world. We have no problem providing what's normally required, a five- or six-foot sidewalk, sidewalk. It's just a little, a little effort to try to minimize the amount of paving that we would put, particularly since we're down in the floodplain area. So that was the, the request for that other modification. Both the Planning and Design Review Committee, as well as the River Area Redevelopment Commission, they both concurred with that, and they were supporting our request for both of those The seven standards, that's probably one of the most important aspects of this. And we feel like we meet, in some instances exceed, all of these seven standards. I'll try to go them, through them relatively quickly. I know that you probably have these in your packet of information, but I think it's probably worthwhile to, to go over them. Number one, that the proposed use and development of the land will not materially endanger the public health or safety. This project has been reviewed by TRC. City staff has reviewed it, and we are obligated to comply with all aspects of state, not only state, but city ordinances with regard to public safety and public health. Number two, that the proposed use or development of the land is reasonably compatible with significant natural topographic features on the site and within the immediate vicinity of the site, given the proposed site design, and any mitigation techniques are measured proposed by the applicant. Again, we have flood issues, floodplain issues, floodway issues. Even with these modifications, we feel that that really just enhances this project, and that we do comply with that aspect of the zoning conditions. Number three, that the proposed use or development of the land will not substant, substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. This has formerly been a, an industrial manufacturing area. We're introducing some new infill mixed use. I think we will do anything but depress any land values in, in this area. I think, to the contrary, that we will be enhancing those, and it will provide an influx of new residents that should help any businesses that presently are in that area. Number four, that the proposed use or development or the land will be in harmony with the scale, bulk, coverage, density, and character of the area or neighborhood in which it is located. The area around Thompson Street is, has been identified and kind of targeted as a higher-density area. So something along the lines of our proposed residential project is in fitting with that, with that character. While initially, these buildings may seem a little out of place, with everything that is presently existing, over time, these will certainly fit in, hopefully, with the development that we hope we spur. Number five, that the proposed use or development of the land will generally conform to the comprehensive plans, smart growth, smart growth policies, sustainable economic development, strategic plan, and other official plans adopted by the city. As I mentioned before, we fit in that this is a, a mixed-use, an infill project. We're in an area that has intermodal transportation potential. While we may not be directly on a bus line, we're four-tenths of a mile from Biltmore Avenue. That's roughly a, a nine-minute walk. It's a flat walk due to the proximity to the river. With, with the terrace, terrace spaces, the stairways and all that, that's going to provide connections to Thompson Street for pedestrians, again, in conjunction with the Wilma Dykman Plan. Hopefully, that's something that, that this development can help spur. The, the connectivity to the river is one of the important factors to the developer, Mr. Burt. That's what he, that's one of the things that attracted him to this project. He has great interest to, to improve that riverfront as much as possible. He kind of challenges us with ideas on the design team of what can we do down there? So he's really interested in how we can make some impact to that, to that riverfront. Number six, that the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to transportation facilities, water supply, fire, and police protection, waste disposal, and similar facilities. Again, as I mentioned, we went through TRC, all water and sewer allocation requests. We're fine. There will have to be, there shouldn't be any expansion of utility infrastructures to service this. Everything is adequate in that area. Again, as I mentioned, we're four-tenths of a mile from a transportation route, so we feel that we comply with respect to the transportation components of this condition. Number seven, that the proposed use will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. We've retained the services of a traffic engineer who performed a traffic impact study for this project. It was reviewed by the Transportation Department of the city, and they were, they found no issues with regard to traffic for this, for this project. Again, we feel like we meet these significant conditional findings that we must for a conditional use permit. One thing I will add is I know that, listening to all of the presentations this evening with regard to affordability, workforce housing, the importance of that, the, that is something that Mr. Burt is interested. He's interested to the point that we have submitted to the city. We've had numerous meetings with Mr. Stottinger, even Mr. Esselstein, Alan Glyns. We've had several meetings with them to discuss the affordability issue, workforce housing issue. We've even made application to the city with regard to requests for the land use incentive grant program. So that is something that we will be having further discussions with, with staff, and hopefully with you in, in the next few meetings. I guess, in closing, for my part of this presentation, again, just want to reiterate our, the feelings how we comply with all seven aspects of the conditional use permit process. And I guess as our final part of our presentation, I'd ask Mr. Pace Burt to come up and just give you a few words about, about the project.
And, and do we have the traffic study too, as well? In the record in some shape or form? Okay.
How are y'all doing? My name is Pace Burt. I'm from Albany, Georgia. This will be hopefully the third project I've done here in Asheville. The first one was SkyLofts, which was a defunct project off of Alexander. That was an abandoned project when I took it over, and now it's been a huge success. It's right off of Martin Luther King. And second, the, the second project was on Haywood Street. It was called Village, Haywood Village. We bought that about a year ago. It was also an abandoned project that a previous developer had, had failed to complete, and we're currently under construction with 70 new units on that project also. So we hope that, a lot of people think we're pioneers, and we take, we take a few risks on projects that other people aren't interested in doing, but we believe a lot in this area. As, as Clay had mentioned, the river corridor is probably the most exciting part of this whole project. You know, even though right now you have bed springs and trashcans and things like that in the river, we're going to make a big impact and, and try and clean up that area, and make it something that, that not only our residents, but the public can enjoy. But I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? This may not be for him, but.
Sure.
My question was, the traffic study that was done?
Yes, ma'am.
Did it incorporate the potential effect of the potential Florenoi project on Fairview Road? And, and how, how did? What were the results? Okay.
James Voso, Madderding Craig, 12 Broad Street. I was the traffic engineer on this study. Could you repeat the question, please?
So when you did the traffic study, did you take into effect the potential effect of the potential project on, the Florenoi project on Fairview?
Yes, ma'am, we did. We did, I actually worked on that study as well, for that project. We did that study first. So that study does not consider this project. However, when we worked on this study, it came after we had done the Fairview project. So this study assumes the Fairview, Fairview project is approved, and so those traffic volumes are incorporated into this study and have been analyzed. Does that address your question?
May I ask a traffic-related question? So in leaving this development, if somebody wants to get to I-40, how are they going to go safely?
Well, there's a few routes. There's, unfortunately, there's no direct, the most direct route is to go down Thompson Street and make a prohibited left turn. It's currently signed to not make a left turn there from 8:00 AM, I think, to 6:00 PM. However, when we did our traffic counts, and we did counts during the peak hour, unfortunately, some people are making that prohibited move. It's not a lot, but there are a few people that are, that are doing that, because there is no other direct route. So in order to make a legal maneuver, you're probably going to either go up Stoner and turn right onto Fairview and drop down into Biltmore Village that way, or you will go up Thompson Street to Glendale, and then access from Swananoa River Road.
Okay. So I guess, you know, we're either encouraging people to make a legal turn, or we're increasing the impact on Stoner primarily, and that's a very narrow residential road as well, too.
It is. And, and you're correct, that the, the traffic volumes will increase on Stoner. And Stoner Road isn't a narrow road. And there are places where there are, there's street-side parking. So, so in essence, it, it kind of functions as a one-laid road in places, because you have about 18 to 20 feet of width, and if you have a car parked there, you're essentially down to one lane. However, from a capacity standpoint, there, there's still capacity there. The traffic volumes. The traffic volumes, considering the, the two apartment complexes, the traffic volumes would, would about double on, on Stoner from what is out there today. From a capacity standpoint, it has the capacity to handle that. From a, from a quality of life standpoint, we recognize that, that's an impact, but, but from a traffic analysis, the capacity is there, the levels of service are still acceptable, so.
What are those levels of service?
Excuse me?
The projected levels of service on Stoner?
Well, at the two intersections, at the intersection of Stoner and Thompson Street, it's an A, and at Stoner and Fairview, it's a B.
And just for the benefit of everybody, the levels of service range from A is, is very acceptable down to.
F.
Which is failure.
Yes, and what needs to be understood is that a road, in the traffic engineering profession, we try to have our roads and our intersections and so forth function at a level of service D or better because at level of service E, you're at capacity. At level of service F, you're over capacity. At level of service D, you still have some capacity available, although you're approaching the capacity of the facility, so you still have some capacity available on that facility at D. So if you're at D or better, we're saying it's functioning adequately. What some people misunderstand is that, well, why shouldn't everything operate at A? Well, if everything operates at A, you have facilities that are overbuilt and underused. You, you have a, an interstate with, with local traffic volumes on it. That's, that's at a level of service A, so you don't necessarily want, although it, it sounds nice, you don't necessarily want things operating at A all the time because that means, that means then you're, you're overbuilding your infrastructure.
So, I mean, this is a really important point for us, not just on this project, but in general. When we, you know, we often hear on projects that the negative traffic impacts that come with this project, wherever it is, whatever part of town, that it might be from a standpoint of volume and congestion, that we, we should consider this A to F ranking scale and what the effects of a given project like this one would be. And, and again, we're, we're still well under capacity and at a very acceptable level of use of Stoner Road as a result of this project is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just one more question for you while you're up here regarding traffic. It's my understanding that the church there on Stoner Road, when they have service, that a lot of folks do park along the road there, and I haven't been there on a Sunday morning, so I'm not sure exactly how extensive that is. But I'm just wondering what, if y'all looked at Sunday mornings when you looked at this?
We didn't because typically the traffic, the peak traffic volumes that you would experience at the apartment complex would be during your weekday a.m. and p.m. peak hours when people are leaving to go to work, to go to school, et cetera, coming home from work. On a, on a Sunday morning, you wouldn't expect that much traffic being generated and so typically that's not something that we would study. So I, no, we haven't looked at that.
Thanks.
Okay, that sounds like that's it for traffic for right now. Any other questions? Yes.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Burke.
You're making me nervous because you're not standing, there's a camera on you. You gotta stand, yeah, you gotta stand right.
Yeah. The whole city's watching.
Not a bad sight.
So I, I appreciate that you're trying to figure out how to make something work here and that the site's challenging, but it gave me opportunity to kind of review our urban place district zoning designation and kind of look at intent there and seeing that one of the intents is to offer a wide range of complementary land uses and employment opportunities. Another is a variety of land use and housing types and prices. So I guess one thing that I was looking at is with this 400,000-plus square foot site, we've got 4,000 of commercial, so it's, it's under 1%. And I'm wondering if you can kind of talk about that wide range of land uses and employment opportunities and how it relates to the commercial ratio?
Yeah, the planning commission also touched upon that and it really became obvious about the demand in Thompson Street and how underutilized the whole corridor is in terms of any type of commercial component. You know, as a developer, you want to be able to try and, you know, build things that are going to be utilized and, and the commercial component, I think, was pretty obvious that it just, there was not, nothing there. We felt like through the design that we needed to give some type of commercial component to fall under the zoning. A lot of people have called it trying, you, you putting a square peg into a round hole. This, this project just doesn't, it's, it's not like the art district of Haywood. It's just kind of a different beast and we've been trying to figure out how to, as, as Alan had mentioned earlier, how to bring this, this, this project and make it conform to that land use program and it's just been very difficult. You know, we're building a huge 10-foot wide sidewalk that, that you probably won't have more than two people a day walking on unless the city comes in and does more sidewalk improvements. You know, that was, you know, that's just part of what we hope will happen in the future. So we're kind of, you know, we're the new kid on the block. Not a lot of people have a lot, some people have confidence in this area and I'm one of them. And so we're just kind of a pioneer in the area of hoping that we can bring in the residential folks and we do have a commercial component. And as a developer, commercial works better than residential. So I mean, truly, if there was a true commercial component, and also the elevation issues, we're 10 feet up in the air. I mean, if we were, we were street level and we had more of a, of an accessibility from the, from, from, from the sidewalks in the building, it would make a big difference, too. But we're going to be eight, 10 feet up in the air and that, that's a big challenge, too, to try and get that commercial component to work with the access of the, of the sidewalk areas, too.
That's really helpful to hear and, you know, we're all real hopeful that there's going to be a lot more of this going on in that area, but I understand that perspective. In regards to the, to the wide variety of housing types and prices, could you, could you address that for a moment?
Well, I mean, ultimately, the project from a, from a design standpoint are going to be larger, two-bedroom, two-bath units. We do have some three bedrooms that are going to be placed in the, in the complex also, no one bedrooms. You know, we, we're very interested in, and do y'all call it Luigi? I think Alan's.
It's, yeah, we haven't used the word enough, so we're still pointing it.
So we were, and I was one of the developers that, that Jeff and, and Blake, we met with them for several hours and had one of our district managers who manages my apartments up in the upstate area and, and this area, sit down with them also and try and help them understand what's going to bring more developers to the table for that program. It's a great program. The fact that you have a community that is willing to, to, to not accept, to, to, to not accept the, the tax dollars to try and help the citizens is, is really incredible. And as developer, we have a certain bit of responsibility also to, to help out the community and, and, and it shouldn't be dollar for dollar. You know, the, the county or the city shouldn't have to totally fund these, these housing issues and, but, but they should support them and I think they're doing a great job. So we're committed to that program. We're committed to, to go beyond what the Radlofts. We were trying to use the Radlofts as kind of a, a minimum of what we would be willing to do and we realized that they had to come back before y'all to ask for some help to get to that 50-point number. I was talking to Jeff earlier about maybe after five years that we add another component of, of units online. We've also talked to him about bringing in the Village of Haywood, even though it's under construction. Can we get that under the Luigi program also? So it's a great program. We realize it's not dollar for dollar. We realize that it's, that it truly is a loss of about $3,500 a unit per year doing affordable as to market rate. But what it also does is it opens up to a larger renter pool, which is very important also because all the units right now are trying to get that small sliver of pie of the people that can afford $1,300 a month and, and that's where everybody's going. And so this program that the city has put together and tweaking it, you know, developers like myself can take advantage and widen up that, that range of people that potentially would rent their units and, and, you know, the program could, could even extend to some existing older units to go in and get them to lower their rents also and do some offsets on some property taxes. So there's a lot of need.
Yeah, and I appreciate all that. I mean, it sounds like you're really well intentioned with trying to bring something that's going to be balanced, that can serve a lot of different folks here and that community minus mindedness is really appreciated from this seat especially. So thanks for working with us on that. As far as this CUP process goes, it sounds, well, I guess I, what I would ask is, is are you committing to the, to certain percentage of affordable and workforce units tonight?
Well, no, because we have to do this Luigi program and we have to, we have to get up these numbers and Alan has sent in a request for us to be able to receive 50 points and he's gotten creative on, on, part of the problem is our distance from a bus line. It's, it's so confusing. I wish this process was more, more simplified for the developers and I think it would bring them.
We're working on it.
Well, good, and we'd love to help y'all, too. Like I said, we don't expect dollar for dollar. We just need some help because at the end of the day, the banks are the ones that are, that are pulling strings. They're the ones that are willing to either not finance a project or finance it and they're looking at that as a loss of potential income and value to a project. These apartments today are costing anywhere from 80 to $100,000 a unit, which is just unbelievable and, and you gotta pay the bank back, so.
So, so if I'm hearing you right, if you, if this gets approved tonight.
Right.
Then you file your Luigi application with, you currently have a 7% affordable, 85% workforce and the rest market.
Right.
This is what I saw in the report anyway, that you would move ahead with the Luigi application and if that were approved, that you would follow through with those numbers.
Absolutely.
That's, that's the current plan. Are you willing to commit to that process as part of tonight's?
As a condition, absolutely. I mean, that, that's, but it's going to have to come back before y'all to approve the 50 points because we can't get there, just like Radlofts was unable to get the 50 points. They had to come back and you, you guys got creative. And I, hopefully by then we'll have some extra, some more ideas. I talked to Jeff a minute ago about committing to 7% and in five years, commit to another 7% if we could continue to, until at that point, we'd have 14% of the units affordable. Just some, some ideas we're throwing around. So hopefully by the time we get back to you guys, we can offer even a more expanded program.
You are singing my tune, Mr. Burke. I really, I really appreciate it.
I mean, you are sincere, but I will commit as a condition that, that what Alan has proposed, I mean, I keep saying, I'm sorry, Clay, I'm sorry. What Clay has proposed that we're willing to do, he's made a submittal for the Luigi program.
Well, I do appreciate that you are willing to commit to that process to provide a wide variety of housing prices. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else on your team going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
There is that one.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for you to cross-examine.
Sorry. I was just thinking of the commercial use and as, as we've shown on the plan, I think it's dedicated, you know, corner here, corner here, but in sort of the river design study or review of the project, there was discussion that there could be just some internal constructability methods that would keep wider bays, if you will, that at a later date could be converted to a live-work space or something. So they'll try to plan that in. If it, if it changed a lot, we might have to amend the plan, but if it was a very minor amount, like switching out a couple of units for a couple of live-works, it would probably be able to happen at a future date. They obviously don't want to be the only commercial neighbor down here. Hopefully, when the area fills in, there's more demand, so we could consider it at that time and just see what happens.
Can I, can I ask follow-up on that? Mr. Burke addressed Gordon's question about the, oh, I'm sorry, this is for Alan. Question about the relative mix of commercial space and I know we're not deliberating on the Fairview Road project tonight, but, you know, it's, it's broadly known in the community that there's been a lot of discussion and interest in significantly more proportional space in that project. And so we're somewhere distances here compared to that Fairview Road project from the heart of Biltmore Village. So when we think about the urban transect.
Right.
You know, radiating outwards. In, in your mind, Alan, what are the differences between, you know, the, the level of, of commercial space, you know, retail, ground for retail mix in that project versus this? Why, why is this more okay at 1% and that, and people are wanting to drive that one up above 4% or whatever that is?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in low numbers. So, you know, I think if you imagine like the downtown, you think of the perfect pedestrian urban environment where every building is, you know, could be mixed use. Now, not every building is. Some, some have an office use, it's all office. There's nothing else in it. Or some are, you know, other government type uses or other things. Ideally, we're going to long-term, the long-term picture is you kind of fill the mix and it changes over time. The beauty of the downtown area is that a lot of these properties have, have had a variety of uses over their 100-year life and, and that's the exciting part about an urban product. That's why this, this investment from a tax standpoint is so important. Urban projects are always, they, they just value add. They go vertical with that, with that tax base, so it's so important. But the ground level is always where your commercial is pretty much going to happen. You, you could live with office on a second level, but retail can't go anywhere except the ground level. Now, they are challenged just with that grade change. That's, that's just built in. It's going to be harder to, to make that connection and 10 feet's kind of a lot, it's way overhead. In our downtown code, we have some standards where once you reach six feet, that's, you know, a little taller than me, I'm, I'm a little tall, but right about here, you're counting another level and it, and it stops relating to the street at that point. And so we start refinishing the fenestration issues of windows and doors. We start recalculating because we're dealing with grade change all the time downtown with all these streets, you know, up and down. So it's the ground level, it's a challenge on this site altogether. It'll, even when this area is very active and it fills in, the ground level retail is still going to be a little bit of a challenge. This treatment here is the best thing you can do is to try to get that activated. It's welcoming. It looks like a space you want to hang out in or explore or be in. And the, on the ground example of something like this, not to the degree of 10 feet, is Biltmore Park Town Center. When you're driving in Shankt Parkway, REI is on the right and there's grade change there. It's, it's about six feet. So we were trying to work with them at that point to create some outside spaces out in front of those buildings, you know, fenestrate, get the windows, doors and other rhythm going and then have some lower level sidewalk, but upper level or intermediate levels of, of spaces where people could climb stairs or step or sit, sit, outside dining. And, and long-term, that, that mix could change.
Alan, what's the great, just right down in Biltmore Village, there are some retail shops with structured parking underneath. And what's the grade change to the retail floor there from the street?
You're talking about the J. Crew, Williams, Sonoma?
Yeah, that, that's.
I think Dallas may be there, too. It's between eight and 10 feet. We're, it's.
Well, let me, let me just offer this observation. You know, I pointed out a few minutes ago that the NCDOT State Transportation Improvement Plan draft envisions, you know, the fix, you know, the ultimate rebuild on Swananoa River Road. And is it true, Alan, that the Wilma Dykman Plan actually recommends splitting the lanes and straddling the river there? Is that the preference of the Wilma Dykman Plan?
That was the concept. True.
Okay. And, you know, and we know that on the north side of, of the river, it is very tight and there, you know, it, it is a dysfunctional street, which is a big part of the reason they want to do this.
Right.
You know, I, I think it's the interest of our community that we, that we actively engage with DOT to make Swananoa River Road under this project that seems fairly likely to happen within 10 years.
Right.
A, a functional in our vision of Wilma Dykman and thus providing a, a much more engaging, aesthetically appealing environment. And that's great news for this project if we approve it.
Absolutely.
And the comments earlier, Mr. Burke, about, you know, that, that Alan noted about adapting the design and structure at the ground level to, to kind of more, toward more commercial, you know, in, in the spirit of the J. Crew thing back there, maybe more steps, more, more activation from the street, the 10-foot sidewalk might be a blessing. I just, I, I could, if, if Swananoa River Road transforms in a way that's very aesthetically pleasing and comes across the creek, this could be, you know, downtown, I mean, it could be a real, it could be as vibrant as the River Arts District is 20 years from now. Yeah. So I just, I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not sure how this relates to the approval tonight, but it's just an observation and this State Transportation Improvement Plan is, I mean, it really caught a lot of us off-guard that, holy smokes, they're getting ready to dump a bunch of money and improve. It's not just this road, it, there are other sections, Riverside Drive from Hill Street up to Broadway, by the way, and Amboy Road from the old racetrack, across, a new bridge across the French Broad River and along Lyman or the River Road all the way to Hendersonville Road. So I mean, that's just more information from the community and all that adds up to about $65 million in improvements within 10 years that could happen here. But anyway, I'm. Well, I did want to say, the good news is, is that, is that with this floodway issue and the, the river corridor is that we, we, we've pushed ourselves back far enough away from Thompson Street that the widening of the project, if it happens within, you know, 10 years, won't be an issue. The only thing I think we need to look at is putting in that 10-foot sidewalk and make sure that we, we take into account that sidewalk will probably.
and make sure that we take into account that sidewalk will probably be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That we make sure that any future improvements in that road area should, that that sidewalk should look at now, because we do have the room to move it out. We do have the flexibility to do that right now. And also, on the other side of the river corridor, we want that as an amenity, but there's gonna be no structures over there. So certainly, if the city comes through and they want to put in a walking path or something along that line to tie in some type of riverwalk, then there won't be any structures over there, and that would be an easy thing to do also.
Well, our goal would be to work with DOT and have that corridor very pedestrian and bicycle-activated in the scope of this DOT project that would go in.
We'll work closely with Alan and Clay to make sure that the sidewalks are all being designed with potential of that happening.
Great, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else with the applicant who needs to speak before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I'm looking at my lawyer.
Yeah, and I guess we would just remind the public that this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and so the seven standards that are set forth in the conditional use permit is, are the things that should be addressed, and this particular project, as they relate to those standards.
Would it be possible to display those standards? Do we have them available to be able to put them up so people can know?
Alan may have them.
I can, I can, I got some, but I probably have to cut and paste a little bit. And also, any testimony should be based on actual knowledge, not speculative fears and that type of thing. And if you go into areas like traffic and property value, that's, those are things that require expert testimony, so. Alan, you wanna see if you can cut and paste them?
Yeah, I'll find that. I've got the UDO here. Give me one second.
He just carries it around.
Interplanning director, carry around the UDO.
I'm looking at these. Number one, that the proposed use or development of the land will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Right?
I bet.
Yeah, there you go.
Six out of seven, I hope.
Just missing number seven.
I have to fold the bottom again.
If you wanna cut, you know, sort of rip it or however, bend it more, not.
Is there anyone who would like to provide comment? There were a bunch of people that came up and got sworn in. Yeah, I'm not, it's not a requirement. All right, we're, it looks like we're.
Thank you, Maggie.
Maggie, yeah. Okay, there we go. Oh, yeah, almost. Yeah, okay, there's the seven.
Thank you so much.
Seven.
That's good, right there. Sandy.
Go ahead. If you'll just state your name.
My name is Dana Davis, and I'm a resident of Oakley, and I'm also on the board of the Asheville Parks and Greenways Foundation. So, I had originally prepared to speak about affordable housing to the project that was moved to the January twenty-seventh meeting. So, I do have a little ammo in that regard. And with this particular project, I understand that if this passes and we cross this, then we will be able to provide, I think it was seven percent affordable housing for this particular project. And yet, based on the two thousand and eight study prepared by the task force, you set forth a goal of twenty percent of affordable housing projects, or of developments dedicated to affordable housing. So, I ask you to consider that when addressing the conditional zoning for this particular project, because it's much more difficult to do something after the fact. And so, I'm switching hats now, and I actually was not prepared to talk about greenways, and I'm so delighted that you've actually already touched on it, Mark, and others. But, as a board member with the Parks and Greenways Foundation, which is a partner with the City of Asheville, we are dedicated to raising funds to support the Parks and Greenways within the City of Asheville. East Asheville has been identified as our greenways portion of the two thousand and fifteen campaign. So, anything that relates to the future proposal and development of that particular corridor, we're excited about, and we want to see support with, because a public-private partnership is very challenging sometimes. It sounds like we have a wonderful partner, excited about this particular project, but want to make sure that we do ensure that if Thompson Street goes one-way, and Swananoa goes one-way, that we do have this. And I think that some consideration needs to be given to that aspect of this project. Lastly, I do want to speak about the sidewalk elimination on the upper side. I understand the architect's design plan, and that was a wonderful thing that I didn't think about, eliminate the concrete. So, alternatively, I would ask that consideration be given to a, what's the word, perme, perme, that word, permeable surface. So, it's really hard pushing a stroller or going down in a bike with grass and whatnot. And if you've ever walked Glendale, it's pretty treacherous without a sidewalk. And if we're talking about doubling the traffic on that particular road, as was cited earlier, then a sidewalk would be great sooner than later. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good night, City Council. Mayor Mannheimer, Vice Mayor, City Council. First of all, I'll say that I lived on Stoner Road, and I know firsthand what's going on down that way. I know it was mentioned, consider the other side of the river. That might have been a good idea. And what looks good on paper ain't always good. And that project that I seen didn't look good on paper to me. And if you build something right beside the railroad tracks, I don't care if you was paying seven hundred dollars a month instead of thirteen hundred, I wouldn't want to live there, because you got a train right behind me. But anyway, I was sitting there morgue-ing over some things, and this is a little something I'm throwing in here. I've been up since quarter to five this morning, but I figured this wasn't more important, because this is where I live. And, you know, you got to really consider the people. You know, we talking about taxes and stuff like that. You gotta really consider the people. And the people's not being considered on this, because we should have been giving a little more information, a little more timely manner. As far as sidewalks, we ain't worried about the sidewalks, the fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen thousand, what are you gonna spend for? We ain't worried about that. I ain't had sidewalks out there in twenty-something years that I've been out there, even though we need them. And it's more than one or two people gonna be, would be walking on the sidewalks anyway. People walk up and down that road every day. They walk their dogs. People bring their kids and stuff up and down the road. And it's still a dangerous road right now, without all this other stuff, this projects and stuff that's coming about. And down there at the bottom of the hill, that, I mean, if you want to build down there, that's fine. Nobody can stop you. But that's really a flood plain down there, you know. You can build it up, set it up high. If it's gonna flood, it's gonna flood. And if you got somebody that's living down there, I know if I was living down there and it flooded, I'm getting out right then. I know you have leases and stuff to hold people, but they are extenuating circumstances. The cut-through on Stoner Road, people been cutting through down there for years, and they still cutting through down there. But we done kind of got used to that. And then we was talking about parking on the street so to accommodate these projects that's going on. Well, I park on the street, and when I got neighbors and family to come and visit me, they have to park on the street. So, you know, that's.
Can you state your name so that we have it for the record?
Yeah, Mike Carroll. Okay. And one thing I forgot to tell you, I'm sorry I didn't tell you. I have three or four people with me, so it would have been the ten minutes. I apologize for not saying that.
That doesn't apply in a quasi-judicial hearing.
But they're welcome to testify themselves.
Right.
Okay. Well, they wanted me to do all the talking, so, if you don't mind.
Well, we're conducting a quasi-judicial hearing, so you're allowed three minutes, and you're not allowed to speak for longer than that to represent a group. We'll need those individuals to speak.
Okay.
It's a like akin to a trial, where you have a witness, and you can't have a witness speak for another witness.
Oh, I thought, I thought that you had three or more people, you had ten minutes.
For a regular conditional zoning, but this is a conditional use permit.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time.
But you can also submit, if you'd like, to any written comments you have to the clerk.
All right, it's all right.
Sorry about that. This one's different than the other items on the agenda.
I was perking up.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm saying, I'm speaking.
And while you're making your way up, please remember to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Walter Barber, and I want to say for the record that I worship, I don't live in that area, but I worship in that area. I'm a member of Fairmount Missionary Baptist Church, and what concerns us most is.
I apologize, but I don't believe he's been sworn in.
Oh, did you swear in at the beginning?
I affirmed.
Oh, okay.
Were you, were you up there, sir, when you affirmed?
I stood up in the back.
Okay, okay. I apologize.
All right.
And I think, I think a lot has been said about ten-foot sidewalks and three-foot sidewalks, and none of that stuff really makes, and what's been said about fourteen percent affordable houses, seven percent affordable houses. The main thing is that you put two-hundred-and-fifty-four units right down below the church, and the churches are stones throw away from those units. And already, you have, that's a little narrow street, Stoner Road, and you have about a hundred cars coming up through there every hour. And they come up through there real fast. It got posted speed limit thirty miles an hour. It don't mean nothing to them people cutting through there. And if you put two-hundred-and-fifty more units, and I understand that January the seventh, you're gonna be talking about another unit that's gonna be right across the street from the church, that's gonna be more volumes of traffic. And what I'm afraid of is somebody is going to get seriously hurt, if not killed, if something ain't done about that. We don't, I don't think they need any more units down there, and no more traffic, because that's the main problem. The neighbors in that neighborhood, they've been staying down there, and on Sunday, when you come out of church, you know, there's zoom, 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 zoom. People don't, it's just dangerous. Don't need that much volume of traffic down through there. And I thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, sir, I'm sorry, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch your name.
Walter Barber.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Maggie, can swear you in.
I'll affirm.
Okay.
My name is Mary Carroll, and I live on Stoner Road, and I have lived there practically all my life. And I've seen a lot of changes in development, which some I think is good. But I've also seen, we're just a small community, but we're, we mean a lot to the community. And I've seen, because of the Biltmore Village, the traffic, the volume of what we've had go through, nobody have thought about infrastructure when it's concerning us. We don't have sidewalks, but a lot of people use that for a bypass to get, and they're talking about developing on Thompson Street, but really, where the development's more in of Stoner Road at the back of it. Okay, when you try to go left on Thompson Street to get exit to Biltmore, there's no way you can get out there with a volume and go left. Even now, we can't. You can go right, or if you go the opposite way, going towards the mall to Swananoa River Road, it's a light. You can get out, but coming back, you don't have a turnabout. It's gonna be congested, you know. We're afraid for our kids to get out there and play. When I'm coming out my driveway, it's dangerous. You know, if, and I just wish, this last thing I want to say, that the developer had considered the community. You know, come to us and sit down. If we have concerns, maybe we can work it out together, because this greatly affects us as a community. That's all I have to say. But, you know, change is good, but some changes in the picture that I seen, I could barely see it, but the demographics of how huge it is just really hit me. It don't fit in with the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, my name's Katie Hicks. I live at two-sixty-three Fairview Road, just up from Stoner Road. And I just, I just very briefly wanted to second what some of my neighbors have said. One, that the church there really is hazardous for folks coming out of church on Sundays. I've driven by there, and I think that could be a real big concern. And then the second thing is regarding the elimination of the sidewalk. If there is this talk of making this district into walkable with greenways, I think that the residents in Oakley would very much like to be able to connect to that and walk to that via sidewalks. I know people walk and run down those roads, Glendale and Stoner and East Drive, and it's pretty hazardous right now. And if there were sidewalks, you know, along Thompson eventually, then there would be a purpose to connect that up Stoner, because the community in Oakley would probably appreciate that. So, those are just a few thoughts. Thanks.
Hello, my name is David Ankeny. I live on the property that is partly on Stoner Road, and then I have a driveway that goes on to Fairview Road. And I wanted to take this opportunity to stand with my neighbors and to validate everything that they've said. I walk with my family down that road. I travel on that road quite a bit, and I can assure you that it is one of the most challenged areas to handle traffic volume currently. I would also like to echo the sentiment that there's likely some fences that need to be mended here. I think this area has probably been neglected somewhat from an infrastructure perspective. So, if we're talking about change, I would want to focus on Stoner Road and Fairview area, and just Oakley in general, as well as recommend that the best way to make good neighbors is to come and knock on the door, talk to them, ask them if you can come be a part of their community first. Now, I know you can follow the law, which states that, I believe, you have to send out a notice for people within four hundred feet. Clearly, there's something to this scale that's gonna affect more than people four hundred feet away. So, the thoughtful approach to this, and the recommendations going forward, are to please bring people to our community. It sounds like these folks do have good intent, but to please bring folks to our community who see that and value that, and knock on the door, and who come on and come talk to us, and who want to come fit in our community and be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Question.
Mr. Mooney, you described the narrowing of the sidewalk along Stoner Road, you know, scaling it from ten feet down to five or six feet. What does that accommodate in terms of the site design and the structure? Does that, would it cost you a parking space or two to get it back to ten feet? I hear what you're saying about the impervious, but.
No, sir, it doesn't impact.
Hold on one record. What do we, we need to reopen the public hearing.
Right. We need to keep it open as long as people are actually testifying.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It does not impact parking spaces. It was just a means of excess concrete, in my opinion. I was the one who actually suggested it, that here's a, you see, in the urban place, any street frontage is required. place, any street frontage is, is required to have a 10-foot wide sidewalk. This lot, this property actually is a corner lot. It has Stoner and it has Thompson, so it has 10 feet on either side. In conjunction, my issue was Thompson Street, I completely understood that. Wilma, Wilma Dykman, it's 10 feet, that's wider than a, a parking space. But I understand that on Thompson. Going up Stoner, I could visualize it, I could understand it adjacent to parallel parking spaces on the street. It also worked in with the plaza concept that we had at the corner. But on the other side of Stoner Street, you have another property, well, it will have, it would be required to have a 10-foot sidewalk as well. I just don't necessarily see the need of two 10-foot side, wide sidewalks on either side of Stoner. And again, it's not anything other than, why do we have to unnecessarily have more pavement than we really use?
I hear you. I appreciate that. And so just to be clear, down at the corner of Thompson is Stoner. You turn up Stoner, it's 10 feet, but then it diminishes pretty quickly and then stays five or six feet for most of that, most of that, yeah.
Okay, it, it may be a little difficult to see, but this is, we have a ramp right through here that we traverse to get up to this terrace area.
Okay.
Sidewalk to this point, from here to Thompson Street, will be 10-foot wide. From this point up to the edge of our property, to the property line, would still be six feet. We are not talking about eliminating. I think maybe some of the audience misunderstood what I was saying. I'm not suggesting at all to eliminate sidewalk. I'm just talking about getting it back to what is a normal required sidewalk width for the rest of the width.
Is that, is that, is the sidewalk along there set away from the curb? Is there a vegetated buffer between the curb and the sidewalk?
Yes, there is. You have, you'll have the pavement edge, and then basically a 10-foot wide strip, and then the sidewalk.
Okay, I'm, I'm, just to be clear, I'm, I'm satisfied with that design. I, I wanted to, because of the questions about the width and the-
Right.
It was a helpful clarification.
Accommodating pedestrians and all. I just want to be very clear about what we're looking at. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, any, anyone else? Do I, anyone else have a question or a motion?
I've got a comment. With, again, with this Urban Place District, Mr. Burke, you're, you're helping us in some ways kind of define what we want, and so it puts a kind of an added dimension on this hearing tonight, is, is knowing that other folks coming forward after you for Urban Place will be looking at this as a template. You know, stated concerns about the commercial, I understand the perspective y'all are bringing, and in thinking about Urban Place in general, I think that as we are trying to work it in, especially down there in that area, that either those folks applying for this need to do a pretty good job on a lot of complementary land uses, or a really good job on the housing variety of prices, or a really good job on the variety of employment opportunities. So in, in looking at your application, the commercial's not there, and I understand the context within, I understand why it's not there right now. The intention that you bring to create that variety of housing options, what I would do is, is first of all, I'll challenge you to bring that affordable piece, that affordable to 80% of area median income and below to 10%. To work your workforce numbers and market numbers, whatever you need to make that work, because that's, as you know, from building in this area, just something that we're having a really hard time with. For tonight, as we talked about while you were up here, and that you were willing to condition this on following the process based on that 7% number and 85% number, I'm, I'm comfortable beginning there with you, knowing that we're going to be working together for a while, and we can, we can kind of go from there. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, and, Robin, help me if I get it wrong. I move with the added condition that the developer complete Luigi application and follow through with those allowances, and that the application shall reflect 7% affordable at 80% of area median income, and 85% at workforce between 80 and 120% of area median income. To approve the conditional use permit for River Mill Lofts development on Thompson Street and Stoner Road, with the setback for Building A approved at between 35 and 45 feet from Thompson Street, and between 45 and 55 feet from Stoner Road, to reduce the effective scale of the retaining wall through the use of smaller wall sections, step backs, landscaping, change of materials, vegetation, stairs and terraces. Along the setback for Building B approved at between 55 and 95 feet from Thompson Street, and the sidewalk width along Stoner Road to be approved to be six feet wide at the portion of the project south of the ramp, and subject to the site plan and elevations and the conditions outlined in the TRC report, because the proposal meets the seven conditional use permit standards.
Second.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
With that, I want a couple, couple of things. With, with the applicant, I wanted to just make it clear that this is a condition that, that you presented to council. Is that correct? Or who, who's speaking on behalf of the? Well, can somebody come up to the, I want to make sure I understand, what, what is the condition that they, they apply for the Luigi?
Correct, that they apply, follow the, follow through with the process, and go ahead with any of those allowances given via the process.
Okay, and-
Of course, there are, we would be voting on those.
Correct.
We have already made that application.
Right, right, and, well, just, we're just firming up that, that y'all are just going to walk through the, to the end of that process. Yeah.
So that it, so that it comes before council for consideration.
With, with no obligation by council as to what way or whether that the grant will be allowed or not. Okay, and then the other thing was, is I understood it, at least someone testified, that they, they were willing to, to voluntarily commit to that condition, as opposed to it being the council imposing it. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, okay, so you consent to the imposition of that condition?
I believe so. Yeah, as, as far as the application goes, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, just want to make sure I got it all clear.
Got it, and you got a second, Mark?
For Jan. I just wanted to clear up what, just got cleared up.
Okay. Okay, we're clear, okay.
Comments?
Yes. Am I closing the public hearing?
The public hearing should be, should be closed unless anybody has any further questions.
Consider it closed.
I, I remain concerned about the traffic impact. I think you, the developers have an understanding of the situation there, and if you're willing to take that on for the future residents of this, and knowing what, what you're doing there, that's your decision there. But I do worry about the impact on the surrounding neighborhood, particularly Stoner Road. With that in mind, I think we heard pretty clearly tonight that it would be in, in your interest to begin to develop a relationship with these folks that are going to be your neighbors for the future here. We've seen examples of developers and neighborhoods working together well. We saw it earlier tonight. It's a real important piece that sometimes gets overlooked, and I would encourage even trade names and phone numbers tonight, because this is an important piece that you're going to need in the future. And, and so I'll be supporting this tonight, but I think for me, that's, I've seen where if you don't do it, you can get on the wrong path and stay on the wrong path, but if you do it, it's amazing what you can accomplish as well, too.
Anyone else? Okay, I've got a motion and a couple of seconds, and, you know, other questions or comments, so all those-
I want to clarify one other thing with respect to this condition. We're talking about, I just don't want there to be any questions later, that it is the application that has been submitted already. So this is one that's underway.
If the application reflects the 7% affordable to 85% workforce, then yes.
That is already in, in the system.
Yes.
Correct? So we're not waiting some indefinite time for it to happen or anything like that.
Correct.
We're underway. Okay, sorry.
Thanks.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, that concludes our public hearings. Thank you very much. We have one other item of un, which is a piece of unfinished business.
Good job, Jan.
No. You didn't tell me it's a check. No, Mark's already done. Did not visit that debt.
You should have heard what you said about your whole ass to me.
I'm going to get, I'm going to have him sign a hip before we do this.
Yeah, I wondered about that. We're just taking a moment.
Good times, Jan. See you soon.
Okay. See you all.
Bye, Jan.
See ya. Thanks.
Bye, Jan.
All right, the last, yeah, there's no way to get both of those on there. Okay. The, the last item on our agenda is a resolution adopting the council's legislative agenda. It is, there's a, a link on the agenda to the council's legislative agenda, and it's also on the overhead. This legislative agenda has now been considered several different times, but it has also been reviewed with Buncombe County Legislative Delegation, and some edits have been made to it as a result of that recent meeting with our legislative delegation. And finally, it was reviewed today by the Governance Committee, and one, one clarification was made under municipal revenue. Just to clarify that the fourth bullet was referencing highway transportation funding reform should not impact local government revenue. Now it reads transportation funding, not highway transportation funding. So this, this legislative agenda represents the overall concepts that the council is concerned about with the upcoming legislative session, and highlights within these broad policy statements some specific issues that we know will probably come back, the legislature may consider again, or new, new issues. And I, I will take this opportunity just to highlight, I'm not going to go through this whole agenda, but highlight that it is forecasted that this legislature will review of particular concern to local governments, a revamping of the sales tax for North Carolina. Part, part A of that revamping will be an examination of the sales tax, broadening the sales tax, applying it to more, more things, and lowering the overall sales tax. So what they call broadening the base and lowering the tax. But the other part of that revamping, the second half of that conversation, is potential legislation to change how sales tax is allocated throughout the state, and that is of particular concern to local governments because the change in how sales taxes allocated could drastically impact different parts of the state differently. Some projections we've seen of, of some concepts being floated would reduce the amount of sales tax to Buncombe County and all of its entities, school districts, cities, by a reduction of 22%, which would be a significant amount of revenue loss to this area. So, and I just highlight that. I've spoken to the chamber about that. I've tried to beat this drum as much as I can, and it will, it's definitely an issue being discussed by cities. And tomorrow, Councilman Pelley and I are both going down to Raleigh to the League of Municipalities Annual Legislative Agenda Setting Meeting, and I'm certain that that will get some discussion among other items. So just, any opportunity we get, because I think, I think it's going to be pretty fast and furious from now until the legislature convenes in January and moves pretty quickly into tax reform. If there's anyone who has any questions or comments or other items?
I like this final version.
That's a motion. I heard it right.
Second. Move to approve.
Second, we have a motion, and a second, anyone wishing to make comment on the motion to approve the legislative agenda for the city of Asheville? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you, Alex, for all your work on this. Thank you. All right, I have, we are to the end of our agenda. I have a, first I have a Mr. Nelson Lordman, who signed up to speak about the zoning, conditional zoning on Fairview. So I'm not sure if Mr. Lordman is still here. I see no one standing up to that one. And the second person I have signed up to speak is Jonathan Robert, who offered me a pronunciation, which is very helpful, which is speak-
I spell it phonetically, according to Mary.
And, and your topic is stuff and things.
Yeah, I'm here basically to discuss the, the chief of police issue, namely, I was happy to, to see that Chief Anderson resigned. I think the waters had been definitely muddied. I was saddened to see him extort $35,000 from the city on his way out, but-
Just, if you could hold on. Do we know what's going on out there? Sorry.
It's all good. I hope that doesn't cut into my time. I lay that blame firmly at the doorstep of the city manager's office. But what pains my heart the most in all this is how the ugly specter of racism raised it, raised its head over and over again in the course of all this. And I am here as a citizen to advocate for, hopefully, in this process, weighing heavily on hiring another African-American chief of police, so that we could finally put to bed the issue of whether this was a content of character matter or if it was a color of skin matter. Now, I know as a citizen, I don't have very much say in that. It's funny, though, because it doesn't seem like the city manager's office has much say in that right now, either with the fact that they've hired an outside, or are trying to hire an outside consultant to manage this effort. It must be gravy days to be consultants around Asheville with all the money that y'all are lobbing around for folks that are making decisions independent of this body itself. But that said, I actually attended the recent CPAC meeting, the Citizens Police Advisory Committee meeting. Unfortunately, the city council member who is liaison to that didn't attend, but he had a very justifiable excuse for not being there. So I'm going to echo the sentiments of the citizens who were there. And also, Mr. Forbes wrote a really great article in The Blade. I highly recommend everybody to get a chance to read that. Mainly, what I noted was that citizens on that committee were very adamant that there needed to be a lot more public response and opportunity for public participation in the selection of a new chief. I witnessed members of that committee sternly talk Mr. Featherstone down from kind of the wonky, rule-by-bloodless bureaucratic ad hoc statistics that kind of comes out of this city manager's office. And I, I second that, really, we're witnessing a, a, a countrywide uprising against police brutality. It's daily in the news now, Cleveland, New York, Berkeley, St. Louis. We're a world-class city, and I would hope that we would hire a world-class chief of police, but I would also hope that we allowed the citizens of this community to have their voice heard in that process. And I would also hope that the Civil Liberties Resolution that y'all passed over a year ago now features prominently in that decision-making process, and that the new chief of police is very, 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 very aware of the policies that you have presented about how we govern and how we police and how we interact in our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Dylan Callahan. I'm not saying it right. You were going to say it right for me.
Hi, my name is Dylan Callahan. I'm a student at Warren Wilson College and a volunteer with Food and Water Watch, a national consumer watchdog organization with hundreds of members in Asheville and over 20,000 members across the state. I'm here tonight to urge you to support a resolution that helps protect public health and preserves effectiveness of antibiotics for human medicine by ending the overuse of antibiotics on factory farms. Roughly 80% of all human-grade antibiotics- Roughly 80% of all human-grade antibiotics in the U.S. are fed to non-sick livestock, which is contributing to antibiotic resistance in humans. Industry mandates that the livestock producers on factory farms give their non-sick livestock low doses of antibiotics in their feed every day. While the weak bacteria in the livestock are killed, the strong bacteria multiply and spread, becoming resistant to the antibiotics. These stronger bacteria make their way into the environment and to humans via animal waste, which is spread on crops, open waterways, exposed farm workers, the tires of trucks leaving these farms and sometimes on the surface of raw meat. As a result, everyone becomes susceptible to antibiotic-resistant strands of bacteria such as E. coli, Salmonella, MRSA, or other infectious bacteria, regardless of proximity to farms or consumption of meat. According to a 2013 Center for Disease Control report, over 2 million Americans suffer from antibiotic-resistant infections each year, and of those 2 million, 23,000 die. Of these figures, only 22% of infections were foodborne, so it is clear that antibiotic resistance are reaching people in a number of different and less apparent ways. Food and Water Watch is a part of a growing movement in individuals and organizations, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, the World Health Organization, and many more. This includes local farmers and town citizens who want to ensure the effectiveness of antibiotics for human use. It is estimated if we keep going down this path of antibiotic overuse and misuse from all sources, antibiotics will no longer be effective in less than a couple dozen years. We need legislation to save antibiotic use for human use and stop their misuse on industrial farms. We urge Asheville City Council to take action and introduce and pass a resolution by the end of the year, calling for congressional members to immediately support the ban of the misuse of antibiotics for non-sick farm animals through the passage of PAMPA and PARA, in addition to send copies of the resolution to state and federal legislators. Here we have a sign-on letter and petition I present in support of such a resolution.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have who has signed up to speak tonight. But if there are others who would like to speak, this is the opportunity, yes. You know the drill.
Good evening, once again, city council and Madam Mayor. I am Timothy Sadler. And, you know, my comment is also in regard to the upcoming search for the next chief of police. I'm here to ask that we require, or, you know, consider it a knockout question that the new candidates will embrace and endorse community policing. Also, there have been some instances that have come to my attention where the Civil Service Board has undermined the will of the past chief and, of course, the city by reinstating officers that behave criminally and betray their oath. And so through the selection process, I would really appreciate some questions regarding what actions, yeah, what actions will be taken for officers that behave criminally and betray their oath. And, yeah, so that's what I want to offer. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, somebody might have an announcement. I feel like someone's burning to go... No, you're not. You're burning to a jern. You're burning, okay. Anyone, all right.
Here's a quick announcement. Asheville is the home of a professional cycling team.
Oh, that's a good...
That's right. And this is a big deal. There are 37 professional riders that were introduced last night at the Orange Peel. United Healthcare is the main sponsor. This team is more international than domestic, probably, in terms of its makeup. And so, just like with the Asheville Tourists and the UNC Asheville Bulldogs, we got somebody to root for. And so you can follow them online, United Healthcare Pro Cycling, UHC Pro Cycling, the Blue Train, as they're called.
Yeah, I saw them all set up in the Renaissance Park in that.
I've got a lot less momentous announcement. I'm not urging purchase. I'm not, this is not a commercial announcement, but I'm really excited. I'm having my first one-person art show. It just started on Sunday at the West End Bakery. It's barns and chickens. And go buy, I think you'll enjoy it.
You sure it's not sold out already? I heard you selling like hotcakes.
You already, is it coming out then? All right.